I would like to call this to order the meeting of the City of Tacoma Park City Council. With a clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Circe.
Here.
Councilmember Fulcher.
Present.
Councilmember Dibala.
Present.
Councilmember Gibson.
Here.
Councilmember Siemens.
Present.
Councilmember Hansak.
Present.
Councilmember Small.
Wonderful. Good evening, everyone. Councilmember Small will not be joining us tonight due to a family emergency, and so he is in transit. But we wish him safe travels. Tonight, we have a... Oh, actually, nope. I need to provide a statement regarding the June 8th administrative function session. So on June the 8th, the council met to discuss personnel matters related to the city manager search. During that, as a function, a core function of the city council is to hire a city manager. We have the ability to have an administrative session for the purpose of determining how we would like to organize ourselves around that effort. And to that regard, one of the key readouts from that meeting is that a city manager search subcommittee within the council has been developed. Councilmember Small, Councilmember Dibala, and Councilmember Hansak will have agreed to serve on the city manager search subcommittee. And separately, separate from the meeting on the... Gosh, what Dana said. Well, the 8th. There was establishment of another subcommittee, the finance subcommittee. So I know folks have been interested in knowing who is going to work on finance matters. And that subcommittee consists of Councilmember Siemens, Councilmember Gibson, and Councilmember Fulcher. So I want to thank all of my colleagues for your diligence in working to divide and conquer on the numerous things that are before this council. So with that, I do have a quick scheduling update. We are delaying the discussion of the proposed procurements on the construction of Domer Avenue sidewalk. That item will be rescheduled for a later date, potentially as soon as next council meeting. But we are tabling that agenda item for tonight. Therefore, we will be covering during work session, discussion of MML legislative action requests, as well as proposed procurements, ERR-funded, 15-person van for rec department, two trash trucks, and then two electric fleet vehicles for the police department. We will also be discussing a proposed procurement regarding the Tacoma Branch Stream restoration. In terms of upcoming agendas, on... One, as a quick reminder, June the 19th is Juneteenth. City offices and facilities are closed for the Juneteenth holiday. On Wednesday, June the 21st, the council will meet at its regular time of 7:30. We will have a, for the record, Acknowledging Pollinator Protection Week, which is June the 19th through the 25th. We will also have presentations, final report on the MW COG grant for the Metropolitan Branch Trail Upgrade, presentation of preliminary designs, and final report on the MW COG grant for the new AV Bike Way Section D. And that will be a presentation of the summary, presentation of preliminary designs. We will also receive an update on the submission of the 2024 Maryland Grant applications. We will have a voting session, ordinances approving the procurements that we would discuss tonight, as well as a resolution approving submission of legislative action requests, which we will also be discussing tonight in work session. After that, we will have a work session on the ARPA programs and budget, as well as boards and committee appointments. We will not meet on Wednesday, June the 28th, as many of us will be at the Maryland Municipal League Conference in Ocean City. And just as a reminder, Tuesday, July 4th, is a holiday. We're nearing on the 4th of July. And city offices and facilities are closed for the Independence Day holiday. And that takes us to July the 5th, where we will have a voting session on the board and committee appointment resolutions and a tentative work session on the Tacoma Park Rec Center redevelopment update. Okay, so with that, I will turn things over to public comments. Given that we have no voting items for tonight, we will start with general public comments. Do you have any general public comments tonight?
Hi, everyone. John Rogers, 7425 Baltimore Avenue, Tacoma Park, Ward 1. So first part of my comments, comments I much prefer making, which are kudos to the city and the city council and the mayor for delaying the public hearing on the minor master plan amendments till September 14th. I think it makes a lot of sense to sort of take stock and try to get ahead of things. I also, this hat was my, was my baseball coach hat. It was my soccer coach hat that I wore for, it must be 15 seasons. Kind of like every time you catch a fish, gets bigger, maybe, you know, in a couple of years, it'll be 20 seasons that I coached. But it was for a very long time. And so for that, I really want to, I really want to second the comments made by Councilmembers Small and Hansak recently about the importance of recreation. Recreation is so important. Kids have to have a place to play for structured play, for unstructured play. As we go through this very important process and deal with things, we need places for kids to play in so many ways, and I can't say that enough. Of course, we also need affordable housing, and the role of government is to insist that the needs of the majority of the citizenry are met. And so to that end, between now and, and September 14th public hearing, I think the community needs to be provided with a map and a facts about the proposed minor master plan amendment. I think the city newsletter should be used to get that information out and facts used. I think we also need a simple statement about maximum density that's being proposed. I also, at this point, want to avoid evaluating pros and cons, how high a building gets, how wide it gets, how much, and all that. Rather, I'd like to see, I'd like to have people see things and come up with some of their own comments, rather than sort of channeling people's comments. Unfortunately, now, some sort of more critical comments, but set out in the best of spirits. So I was looking at the purchase of the two new trash trucks. And the background memo said that the approved FY '24 budget, you know, approved the purchase of two trucks. As you know, I'm not really in favor of that, but that's not, that's not for me to say. But I could not find the final FY '24 budget on the city's Budget and Documents website. I went looking for it using the, the site. I just couldn't, I couldn't find it. So it needs to be put up there, and I'd ask that you get that up there as soon as you can. I also can't find a final version of Councilmember Dibala's budget resolution. That's a good thing. I'd like that. I'm running out of time, so I want to be really quick. I went over, I went to the internet, and I found two comparable used 2010 trash trucks with a price between $82,000 and $188,000. So I think the city council should at minimum require an accounting associated with the disposition of vehicles, assessed value of vehicles prior to disposition, the means of disposal, auction, direct sale by whom, the dollar amount received, and the disposition of those funds. Notice that auction sale should be in the city newsletter, and the city should do this for street sweepers. Now it needs to sell. I'm running out of time, but we need to work on the back end and maximize and get as many dollars as we can on the back end. So thank you very much for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you. Do we have any other general public comments tonight? Come on down, Ms. Machuie.
Hi. Thank you, everybody, for coming here. And thank you, Mr. Siemens and Ms. Hansak, for coming to our meetings. And, but talk is cheap. 2015, I founded Parents' Association. For two years, I fought the city for that, for help for that, because all people wanted to talk about... And actually, the lady who was here before, who I heard was fired, I forgot her name. She actually told me, the city has told me, just to help non-disabled seniors for the Village of Tacoma Park and the lifelong people. I went to their meetings, and I tried to speak up for people with special needs, to affect their brains. They wouldn't listen. They actually were antagonistic toward me. I was refused to be in the recreation committee because I asked for help for disabled people. I'm just tired of fighting. I'm sorry. I don't like fighting. And my ghost was going to come and haunt this place at will. When I die, my ghost is going to haunt this place. I swear to God. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Machuie. Do we have any other general public comments?
Good evening. Colleen Cordis. It's been a while since I've done this. I don't see the, there's a timer. Ward 1. On behalf of Community Vision for Tacoma, we wanted to ask the mayor and the council to draft a resolution to ensure that residents and workers at office and residential buildings with rooftop wireless facilities are not exposed to levels of radio frequency radiation that exceed federal FCC limits. So specifically, a resolution that would call on the County Department of Permitting Services to require more detailed radio frequency radiation emission mapping when the applicant's own reports predict that the levels that their antennas generate will exceed federal FCC limits. But their maps are not detailed enough to be sure no one inside the building, at windows, or on balconies are being illegally exposed to levels that exceed federal limits. And then the second ask in such a resolution would be to urge the Department of Permitting Services at the county level to develop and implement procedures ASAP for reviews and inspections, thorough inspections, to confirm that all the mitigation measures needed to bring the sites into compliance with federal rules are actually implemented in the... Oh, and these are compliance measures that are in the applicant's own RF emission compliance reports, things their consultants tell them they need to do in terms of signs, where the signs need to be located, what kind of warning signs, what kind of barriers, whether the rooftop doors need to be locked, to make sure that all of those things are in place and maintained. And, and because all of these things are necessary according to federal rules to protect people from being exposed to levels that exceed federal limits. So I just want to make it clear that in Tacoma Park, the rooftop wireless facilities are Ward 1. That's the Tacoma Business Center. Ward 3 is Victory Tower. Ward 4 is Park Ritchie. And Ward 6 is Hampshire Tower. So as you can see, this is some of our most affordable and important housing, and also one of our most important business buildings. So again, it's not controversial that people are supposed to be protected from being illegally exposed to RF radiation that exceeds federal limits. Nobody disagrees with that. But the county has never established a process to go to check, to make sure that all the safety measures on those rooftops are in place. So I know that it would be very effective if they heard from the Tacoma Park mayor and council that you're urging the Department of Permitting Services to do this. We really look forward to working with you to discuss any interest you have in doing this, and always are available for questions. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Do we have any other general public comments in the room or on the Zoom? Nope. Okay, great. All right. So I want to turn things over to council comments. Councilmember Gibson, you're up first tonight.
Thank you. I want to follow up on what was mentioned tonight by Mr. Rogers, but also our previous discussion here, the council, the minor master plan. I just want to say that I was pleased with what the council was able to do to get extended period of time and to raise some concerns of real note in, in that, in that resolution. And I just want to say, I believe that there's a role for the city council to play in terms of following up that resolution, a continuing role. And I will discuss that with, with my colleagues, how, what role we will, we will take. Tomorrow is a Zoom call at 7:00 PM regarding the traffic study for Laurel Avenue. So I want to invite all Ward 3 folks to, to join in in that Zoom call. I gave the Zoom, Zoom link on my last weekly update. If anyone does not get my weekly updates, please contact me to, to discuss that, that traffic study and some citizen concerns about it and support, hopefully support for it. I want to say that the Azalea Awards, which I attended, were just a magnificent expression of the third leg of really governance and civility in this country, and that's our civic groups. We've got CBT represented here. There are other, many groups in this city and many individuals that make the city work. And so I'm just really impressed with, with, with the winners and of those awards and all the people that were nominated. And lastly, I just want to say that I spoke with Hank Prinsky, who preceded me by some 30 years in this seat, or at least on this dais. And he's retired to Vermont, and he sends his greetings. And he remembers when, when he was on, was on the council, it was pre-email. And so he was grateful that they did not have email then. Anyhow, thank you. That's all I want to say.
Councilmember Dibala?
I'm just, I'm contemplating pre-email, because as you all know, that's my preferred method of keeping track of things. Wow. So yeah, the Azalea Awards were wonderful. Pride Day and the parade was wonderful. It was awesome to see so many people out. That was just such a lift for me. I also had the opportunity with a couple of other council members to go Friday, and the mayor, to go Friday to the Blair High School Political Convention organized by the three AP government classes at Blair. And it was, if you think science fair but politics, you would get the flavor. And it was grouped, like science fairs, it was grouped by theme. So all the abortion ones were in one place, and all the voting rights were in another place, and so forth. It was, it was a remarkable experience. So I, I had a great weekend. Looking forward, speaking of playing, the Adult Play Day, sponsored by Play Day America here in Tacoma, is at the VFW this weekend, 3 to 7. It's just what it sounds like, play day with beer and maybe some barbecue, I think. And that's it for me today. Thank you.
Councilmember Hansak?
I just wanted to share a few, few things that I attended. I think I overlapped with several of my council members here. But at the Azalea Awards, I want to congratulate everybody who got the Azalea Awards, but particularly Jackie Frazier, who received a lifetime achievement award. And it was so well-deserved and such a beautiful moment to be able to share that with everybody that was here, too, and Jackie. And, and I also, I just wanted to say how grateful I was to the organizers of the Pride event. I felt, I felt so lucky to be able to be at that event at a moment in America where I know that that is not easy across America to celebrate and feel safe. And it just felt so wonderful to be among people who were all coming out in joy and, and celebrating together as a city and community. And then there were so many events this weekend as well. The Montgomery County Symphony played at Sligo Creek Church. And I must say, it was the first time that I got to see them in concert outside of our neighborhood event, but the whole, the whole symphony. And there were some 17-year-old violinists that came to play as well. And I just have to share with everybody, it was spectacular, like really, truly spectacular. I, I was blown away. And so if you ever get the chance to go into our neighborhood church, if you've never been in, and I, in 20 years, I admit, this was my first time inside. It was just, the concert was beautiful, the space was, was really lovely. And I, I hope I can attend more events and all of us can, you know, attend more of these events in our neighborhood. And then I, I want to thank everybody who came out to my office hours on Sunday, which was behind the Sligo Creek Church. We were able to talk a little bit about the minor master plan, and I'm hoping for more of those events. And then I want to thank, thank Essex House for inviting me to join the children in their community celebration for the end of school. I really enjoyed hanging out with them. And thank you to my council members for allowing me to, to not be with them for a little while during the administrative meeting while, while I celebrated with Essex House residents. And finally, I just want to say thank you to Daryl Braithwaite from Public Works, who came out today and spent more than an hour walking the Erie Flower area and looking at parking issues around there, because we are going to eminently have multiple businesses open at that junction. And we were just kind of looking around at some of the, the needs there that are related to, you know, cities drawing lines next to driveways and such. And so, thank you.
Councilmember Fulcher?
Yeah, as Councilmember Hansak said, and I think Councilmember Dibala, we had a lot of overlap this weekend at some really great events. Unfortunately, I couldn't make it to the Azalea Awards, which, I really love the Azalea Awards. It's, it's even, it's, you know, it's really great when someone is awarded the actual Azalea Award. But just to see all the volunteerism and all the community that, all the time that people invest in our community, which I really saw a lot this weekend in, in my goings-on with youth. So, you know, going to Blair and seeing all the, seeing our little political science fair, and then on, at the Tacoma Park Pride Parade and all the other festivities. And then also at the, at the farmer's market this weekend, I was just talking to Councilmember Dibala, how you, you start to see a lot of the same faces participating at all the same things. And it's sort of similar to how when you read these Azalea Awards, you see these long paragraphs about all the different things that these adults in our community do. You can also see that with our youth. So if you just open up your eyes and pay attention to who you're seeing, you will see a lot of the youth that are participating on the outskirts of our community that are sitting there at the, at the farmer's market and doing the, the bank thing with the wooden coins for an ATM, or giving out the bags for if you forgot your, your reusable bag. And then even Councilmember Hansak and I ran into her incoming RISE student, who also is, so they're going to, she's going to be here working in the city under Councilmember Hansak. And she's also working at Roscoe's. And so, you know, yeah, the youth really participates in our community, and I saw a lot of that this weekend.
Great. Yes, it's such a wonderful city where there's so many people that are willing to donate their time and their talent and their treasure for the betterment of the community. So one of the joys of going last, I feel like I say it often, is that I don't have to repeat as much. I was at all of this stuff, right? I want to thank the organizers at Blair, Rebecca and Principal Johnson. It was just such a wonderful display. And it gives you so much hope that you have 10th graders that are thinking about some really, really important issues that are facing our country and it's facing our community and it's facing the students in their school. So I want to thank all of the students that participated in the political fair on Friday. Also, thanks so much to all of the organizers of the Azalea Awards. I want to echo my colleague's sentiments. It was Jackie getting the lifetime achievement award, which is such a beautiful thing. But also to just meet so many people who volunteer their time and have done so much for the community is really, really helpful and just such a wonderful experience. And then the Pride Parade, the organizers, the Paris Hall Patrol, there were so many people who were not only committed to spreading love, spreading openness, but ensuring the safety of our Pride participants. So I am just so grateful to all of the members of our community who volunteer, who give, who care enough to invest in where they live. So thank you all so much. I also want to give a special shout-out to Officer Sims for Pride. He, 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 he single-handedly kept us all in line, and I'm grateful for that. So definitely want to give a shout-out to Officer Sims. And so with that, this...
Mayor, excuse me if I may. I forgot I did want to mention that my wife and I did have the opportunity to go to the 100th birthday party for Josephine Warren, a woman who's lived here her life in Tacoma Park. And it was a great event with, well-attended, and a lot of family, a lot of friends, and a lot of fun. Thank you.
Wonderful.
I also forgot one.
Yes, go ahead.
So to the point that was raised earlier, the fiscal health resolution is on the webs, city webpage, website. It's on the resolutions webpage.
It's on the Resolutions webpage, not on the Agenda page. The draft is on the Agenda page, but the final is posted. It's posted on the City Resolutions page. I just looked.
Thank you so much. And so this weekend, I will be attending Irwin Mack's Homegoing Service. That will be on Saturday, as well as if I can, squeeze in a little play, adult playtime and heading over to the Play Day event. But want to also say Happy Father's Day to all of the dads. We appreciate you. And look forward, yeah, Father's Day. There's a lot going on this weekend, Father's Day. And also hope that everyone have an opportunity to celebrate Juneteenth on Monday. And with that, I will turn things over to our Acting Deputy City Manager, Mr. Eubanks, for City Manager comments.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. Good evening, Council, members of the public and city staff. I'll begin with a few events. The first is tomorrow, June fifteenth, beginning at 7:30 PM here at the Community Center, is the Celebrating Sligo Creek Art Opening. And we'll have three artists who will share their work inspired by Sligo Creek. The Friends of Sligo Creek will have a table to share info about their projects. And I believe that art is already posted, so if you haven't already, please stop by and take a look. On June 21st, happy to announce that city staff will be joining together to have a staff appreciation breakfast. It will be held at two different locations. The first is from 6:00 AM to 7:30 AM at Hefner, and that will be for our Public Works folks. And then for the remainder of our staff, from 8:00 AM to 10:00 AM, we'll have breakfast here at the Community Center. So really glad to be celebrating staff and showing our appreciation for all the hard work that they do here at the end of the fiscal year. On June 22nd, we'll also be continuing our mandatory sexual harassment and workplace violence training. This week, we had two sessions, one for staff and then one for supervisors. And we'll continue that training with some virtual options for next week. So also glad to be getting those back in place. And then finally, in terms of events, on June 30th, beginning at 7:30 PM here in the Community Center, will be the Rhizomis Home Film Screening and Concert. And this is a documentary about the Rhizom Arts Center in downtown Tacoma. And it'll be, it'll include a concert with a local band. A couple of notifications as well concerning the Montgomery College Leggett Building. WSSC has performed some work for the water valve removal in the area of Fenton Street and Tacoma Avenue. These water valves will be removed Friday, June 16th, and a temporary loss of water in sewer to some residents will occur for a period of about two to four hours on that Friday. WSSC will notify the specific neighbors who will be impacted, and the water loss will occur, I think, sporadically over two days or so. The work will continue with the restoration of the curb and gutter on Tacoma Avenue on Monday, June 19th, and restore the trench on Fenton Street on Tuesday, June 20th. On Wednesday, June 21st, paving will restore on both Fenton Street and Tacoma Avenue. And then on June 8th, the Montgomery County Planning Board voted to schedule, as we all know, the public hearing for Thursday, September 14th, 2023 at 6:00 PM. And should anyone be interested, we have several links that'll be included in the City Manager's comments as well as some specifics about how folks can testify. So please, tomorrow morning, look at the City Manager's comments, which will be posted on the Council's Agenda page for some greater detail. And then two other comments. The first, I think, is something that Councilmember DeBala had alluded to a couple of council meetings ago. But we have received the formal announcement that the city's been awarded and accepted into the National League of Cities Capstone Challenge. And so we'll be partnering with ESRI, the Global Market Leader in Geographic Information Systems, the cities of Chula Vista, California, Tuscan, Arizona, for the Build a Strategy, excuse me, Build a Strategic Equity Plan for Your City project. This is an eight-month project that's meant to assist the city in better understanding the community's equity needs, operationalizing our work and finding, findings and measuring impact in real time. So that collaboration with ESRI begins on June 26th. And then finally, to address the comment about the budget, the budget is not typically posted until after the beginning of the fiscal year. Unfortunately, it takes city staff a significant amount of time to pull together that final budget. As you all may recall, it's a 400-page document. It does include goals for the city as well as some performance metrics. And so we will post that as fast as humanly possible, but it typically does get posted after the fiscal year. So residents, as we get closer to the posting of that, we will certainly inform council and make the community aware via our social media posts as well as the newsletter. And that's all I have.
Great. Thank you so much, Mr. Eubanks.
So next on our agenda is adoption of minutes. We have minutes for, from February the 14th as well as February the 22nd. I would like to bring everyone's attention to a new segment that has been added to the minutes where we are highlighting reports out on administrative function sessions, just making note of those in the minutes. So with that, would someone please move to adopt the minutes?
I so move.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions regarding the minutes? Okay. Excellent. All those in favor of moving forward with the minutes for February the 14th and the 22nd, please say aye.
Aye.
Do you have any oppose? Do you have any abstain?
This is February 15th. Is it the 15th or 14th?
Oh, it should be the 15th. My note is incorrect. I apologize for that. Should be the 15th. Oh, you know what? Yep, it should be 15th. All right, sorry about that. My note here has the 14th. All right. Any other questions or comments? Excellent. So with that, we're going to move into council work sessions. The first item is discussion of MML Legislative Action Requests. And so I do just want to do, yes, Anne, I see you. I just wanted to make sure that you were available. So we are joined by Anne Seacock, who is our lobbyist in Annapolis and the guru of all things city of Tacoma Park and our legislative actions in Annapolis. So just as a reminder for listeners and for our colleagues on council, what we're talking about today are the legislative priorities that we would like to submit to the Maryland Municipal League. What the Maryland Municipal League will typically do is collate all of the legislative action requests that they receive from various municipalities, deliberate on them, and then ultimately decide on a set of priorities that they would like to move forward and lobby on behalf of all municipalities. This is just one subset of our priorities, and it doesn't negate us if we're not, if our legislative actions are not selected by MML at large for moving forward with our activities. But the goal for tonight's session is to just make sure that we're identifying priorities that would be appropriate for MML to legislate on behalf of all municipalities as well as the city of Tacoma Park. So, Anne, did I get that right? Or is there any other tidbits that would be useful?
I thought you did a great job. And it doesn't limit the city, nor does it limit MML. MML still weighs in on all kinds of pieces of legislation during the legislative session. But these are the ones that they are going to promote as priorities, as you've said.
Great. And so my colleagues sent around some draft language in light of, one, discussions that we've had in terms of our priorities as well as things that came up over the course of our budget discussions as well as key efforts such as the Minor Master Plan. And so far have identified three kind of general topics. The first is to support, initiate or support legislation to increase authority for municipalities to collect revenues. So that has been an effort that I believe most municipalities have been pushing for a very long time. We've had some small wins, things like the highway user revenues, those dollar amounts. More recently, we've had a little bit of a win in terms of the cannabis legislation and the fact that municipalities can obtain some of the sales tax that are generated from dispensaries that are within their city limits. So the idea is that we would try to continue in that vein with exploring other revenue sources. I do have one question for you, Anne. I went a little creative and said, "Well, if you gave us portions of the sale as it relates to cannabis, why not tobacco and alcohol?" Now, I don't know if there's been talk, I'm pretty sure there has been, but because I looked at some of the state documents around alcohol sales revenue and tobacco. Has there ever been talk with an MML about pushing for obtaining some cut of alcohol and tobacco sales revenues?
I can't speak to whether there's ever been discussion within MML. I think that they are always looking for creative ideas because there really are kind of limited options without being creative when it comes to trying to generate revenue at the local, at the municipal level. So I'm happy to find out if the folks that are there have a memory of this coming up before and if they would like to entertain it again.
Yeah. And so, I mean, we include a couple of options and don't want to, you know, cut off our noses despite our faces. Like, you know, the goal is to identify or to have MML specifically seeking out bills or talking to legislators regarding alternative sources of revenue for cities. But again, I feel like cannabis opened a door that I don't think folks realize they opened. And why not continue to walk through it? So.
Would that include all vices, like the lottery?
So technically, you know, in terms of a piece of legislation, we can certainly explore. The only issue would be we just might need legal advice as to, you know, is there any, is there any kind of legal barrier to being, to separating some piece of it? I'm not aware of any, but I haven't explored this in that level of detail. But I suppose it could be anything on the table.
And I'm not sure if other municipalities are identifying other revenue sources that might be ripe for pillaging, as I should say. But, you know, in thinking of sustainable resources, I think that if the idea is that there are certain communities that are, that have far more alcohol sales, far more tobacco sales, those usually, those communities usually need more in the wings of social support and community support. And as we are starting to continue to see rising rates of substance misuse in the country, I think that we should try to explore ways to not only line certain coffers, but make sure that we're taking a community-focused approach to try to help people who may be in need. So that's just one option. The other item, and this is one that we've had in our LARs for a while, the council urges MML to initiate or support legislation that assists municipalities with housing and community development issues. And so the initial draft is promoting legislation or sources of funding to expedite affordable housing creation in areas with rising property values and rents. Options may include establishing grant programs to fund pre-development design activities for developers of affordable housing. The other is giving authority to municipal or county governments to enact just cause eviction legislation if they desire. I think what's some changes that are happening in terms of certain committees, this may actually be something worth continuing to try, to advance. Creating an infrastructure repair and rehab fund for condominium improvements, it's one. And so there's a couple of quick points that I do want to just run by my colleagues. I know that workforce housing is one area where we say affordable housing, but we are suffering from a missing middle. So affordable can be inclusive of workforce. But the question is, do we want to explicitly call out workforce housing?
Are you asking for answers, responses?
I'm asking to see if folks had any concerns regarding affordable versus workforce.
Could you maybe explain what we mean by workforce?
Sure.
Because there's, you know.
Yeah. Often affordable will be considered alongside some of lower levels of AMI. And so there's usually those opportunities for 60% or lower of AMI for developers in particular when it comes to housing creation, to have access to greater resources on the ground in order to get the financing that they need to build housing. Usually that includes some limitations, income limitations for individuals that can live in them. Workforce housing would mean that you would be at a higher level of AMI. So maybe you're looking more at folks who may fall within the 80% to 100% of AMI. But it would create, in theory, a way to address that missing middle population that we hear a lot about. People who, because of various reasons, they're working, but the cost of living is so extreme here that even if you're at the AMI level, you still may struggle to find affordable housing. So that's the nuance. But it's, again, I think affordable housing would incorporate that. I'm just trying to check, because we had such a strong discussion around missing middle during the Minor Master Plan, whether or not folks want to emphasize workforce in particular, workforce housing.
I would just, I'm sorry, I don't know if I'm-
Yep.
Me? I'm just thinking that while I, in theory, I definitely think we as a city need missing middle housing, I don't know whether that's something that makes sense from the MML perspective, because I don't know if it's something that is a statewide issue. I mean, in terms of whether there aren't enough incentives for that across the state. So I'm just wondering whether that would make sense in that regard, even though it would benefit us. I don't know the answer, if anybody else is more familiar.
I think if we specified workforce homeownership rather than just workforce housing, because that's more what we're talking about.
Homeownership-
Homeownership opportunities for workforce.
And so we, are we, would we, would that mean that it wouldn't be rental? I mean, I would think workforce housing could be both, rental as well as ownership.
Right.
So I think let's not be, let's be broad about that.
I would feel comfortable with it, just because, like, if we toss it out to MML and other people aren't experiencing what we're experiencing, then they'll say, no. Like, that's not what, that's not what the majority of people are experiencing. But I think that it's good to bring it up and at least have it discussed.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. I think this, I think we can make this work, where it's promoting legislation or sources of funding to expedite affordable housing creation in areas of rising property values and rents with emphasis on workforce housing, workforce homeownership opportunities.
Creating workforce homeownership opportunities, yeah.
On creating workforce homeownership opportunities.
I guess I'm, excuse?
And maybe we just don't say with emphasis. It could just say including, creating, and then that way. Yep.
Because affordable already includes the broad range of rental. And the thing that's different is mentioning the homeownership for workforce.
I guess I just don't understand why workforce can't be both, but you're saying-
It can be both, but what-
What do we, emphasis?
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess, I guess you're right there.
And I would take either, but what I'd rather have.
Yeah.
Take it all.
And Mayor- And Mayor, we talked a little bit about, within this context of housing and community development, is the question, and is there anything, perhaps any interest around looking at state-level incentives or guidelines with regard to property tax credits? I'm not myself clear enough about whether it's all at the state level, all, I know it's at the county level as well, and those limits to, the limits to be able to qualify for property tax credits are so many decades old that they're no longer, no longer useful for the majority of folks. And so opening, so that's the question that I raised with the mayor, whether this is something that could fit into this arena of housing and community development. Certainly around affordability, it fits.
So I have a couple of comments on that. I agree that it's probably a good focus for state legislation for MML. What I don't know for sure, because the meeting is next week, is whether the meeting with Delegate Laura Charcutian, myself, and the state SDAT is going to result in state SDAT saying, they're the folks who do the property tax.
SDAT.
Assessments. Whether they're going to say, yeah, that's right, we make the rules, sure, we can change them, or they're going to say, we just follow the rules that the state legislature. So I don't actually know the answer to that yet, but we will know next week. So I think that we can, absolutely can put this in here as a placeholder, and by next week we'll know, I think.
Yep. I think that sounds good. So I drafted an option.
Oh, you already did?
Great. Examining income eligibility criteria for state property tax credit programs to ensure that the criteria aligns with the rising cost of living in the area.
That's good.
Excellent. Thank you.
I just wanted to echo that, that was a very important thing to me, so thanks for doing that.
Well, good, we all agree on that. Backing up for a minute, can we back up for a minute to number one? Can we mention cannabis? Because I, the conversations I've had with other members of MML have suggested that they want to, I don't know, Ann, what it is exactly that they want to pursue this year, but I'm getting the feeling that there is something that didn't get resolved last year that's not sitting well with MML. Can you please enlighten us if you know?
I don't know. I know that the way the bill ended up was better than, and I don't remember which had it better or worse, the House and the Senate, where municipalities will get 50% of the sales tax that comes from sales within the municipal boundaries.
So that would be better than what was expected, yes.
Right, right. So I will absolutely find out, you know, what it is they want to continue to pursue so that we're right there with them.
Councilmember DeBala, did you have any other comments?
I have a possible four, but I'm sure I'm not the only one, so. Yeah, let's keep going.
Okay. All right.
Oh, I know what it was.
Okay.
Sorry. Creating infrastructure repair and rehab fund for condo improvements. I don't know that there is one for multifamily.
Yep.
There's one for low-income multifamily, thank you Delegate Charcutian, but there, I'm not sure that there is one generally, and that sure would be something that would benefit Tacoma Park.
So just.
Condos would also.
Condos, and so it's not low to moderate income rental housing, or multifamily housing.
Right, I think there is one for that already.
Okay.
But I'm not sure.
So we can keep it.
Yes, these are.
Yep.
They're all ideas that need further research, clearly.
Yep.
We're not coming in with specific proposals on these yet, other than just cause.
Yeah, and I think Councilmember DeBala, as we discussed, the, you know, prior LAR, we included the.
Yeah, I think it was in there.
Yep, it was the environmental, the building, energy efficiency, like the energy improvements.
Right, that was last year.
That was last year. So we could keep it general, because infrastructure could potentially also include things like energy efficiency upgrade, other types of upgrades that would be needed.
Yeah, yeah, I meant to keep it general, I meant to add multifamily.
To that.
To condo.
Yep.
That's all.
So it now reads, creating an infrastructure repair and rehabilitation fund for condominium and other multifamily building improvements.
Because, of course, if there is one in Maryland at this point, it will include energy efficiency improvements.
Right.
Yeah.
And then the last item that we have noted is prioritizing or supporting legislation that will ensure SHA is responsive, cooperates and coordinates as necessary to advance improvements on state roads. And I know, Ann, I'd reached out to you about, you know, I know Delegate Charcutian's bill kind of got scrubbed quite a bit before it was passed, and so one thought was, how can we make sure that the meat of that bill, that got kind of scrubbed away in hopes of improvements with, under this new administration, that we can still capture in this particular legislative priority? So were there any suggestions that you have that could help us with making sure, not only that we're capturing the real meat of the issue, but also that this might, you know, rise to getting SHA or getting MML to adopt something like this?
So I think this issue is dependent on timing. It was very clear during the legislative session that the legislature was kind of saying, okay, SHA is saying they're going to do all of these things, save the one piece that was left in the bill that passed. And, but they were very clear publicly, and, you know, with SHA, that if they did not come through with the things they said they were going to that were in the bill, that they would come back and have that bill. So I think it's just a matter of timing, of knowing exactly when, you know, they've proven that they have been able to do it, or will have not, or will not be able to, or be willing to do some of the other pieces of the bill. So I think we'll reach out to Delegate Charcutian to see kind of what her assessment is of where that is. So that's my only concern about this, as a, putting it forth as an LAR to MML, is I don't know if it'll fit their timeline.
Okay, okay. That's helpful. So, Ann, it would be helpful if you get any insight, particularly before we move to a vote next week, that would be really helpful, if we can share that with the council, and then that way we'll be able to pivot if need to, if need be. And keep in mind, like, we send forward, we typically have the ability to send forward three. Is that correct, Ann? I think three.
Yes, it is.
But we are notorious for loading up.
Buckets.
Two is a bucket of like eight different things, right? So if we are at a point where we have two buckets, but those buckets consist of like five items, I don't think anyone would have a problem with that. And so, Ann, are there any other legislative topics that you may be hearing about from folks at MML as everyone's working on their LARs?
Nothing that I've heard that necessarily strikes me as the kind of thing to bring to you all. You know, I think it's much more about what are the things that you want to be pressing with them. So I've not heard of other specific items.
Okay. Great. All right. Well, are there, Councilmember Fulcher?
I'd emailed about possibly stop sign cameras, and I was just wondering what your feeling is about whether MML would be interested in taking that up. I mean, you know, when we're talking about buckets, put it under like a bucket of revenue generation, maybe, even though I'm, you know, I'm probably more interested in the public safety piece, but, you know, we can, for this sake, we could put it under revenue generation.
So I did have a conversation about this issue, and, you know, MML is very supportive of stop sign technology, mostly for purposes of public safety, of course. And, yeah, I think everybody acknowledges that if that kind of monitoring works, it's going to result in less revenue, and everybody supports that, you know, I think from that, as a priority. The concern is you have legislators who simply don't philosophically like the idea of cameras and concerns about technology and privacy issues and the storage of data and things like that. And then you have other legislators who do kind of see it as a money grab and think that local governments are using these things to, just to generate revenue. So, you know, I think, I think it is, it's a worthy public safety measure. I think it's going to take time to build the right kind of support that's needed for it. You know, I think one of the arguments that could probably be used a little more is about how it, how that kind of technology reduces the interaction between law enforcement and drivers, and how sometimes that's a good thing, both in terms of law enforcement being able to be deployed doing other activities, but also, you know, avoid some of the horror stories that we see when it comes to escalations between drivers and law enforcement. So, you know, it's something that MML is going to continue to support. I'm certain that legislation related to it is going to keep coming back. I don't, I think it's just a question about, you know, how much effort is it going to take, and therefore how long will it take before legislators are willing to get behind that kind of measure? May I, on this?
Counsel, yep, you're next.
So on this, on this point, are you saying that MML is going to do it whether we propose it or not?
I don't know that they're going to do it as a priority.
Okay.
They'll support it because they have supported in general, for public safety reasons, that kind of, the use of that kind of technology. I don't know that it's going to be a priority necessarily.
I think that we could put it in three, if the lead-in was, in the interest of public safety, create, council urges MML to do two things. One is the SHA, and two is the stop sign cameras. How's that for a big bucket?
So I was, I was just thinking about, you know, for, for three, if we wanted to write it as, also as it relates to grant funds or fund availability for street sidewalk improvements that impact state highway that fall with the municipalities, as well as resources to fund traffic calming measures, such as, like, you know, we can make it about grant funds, monies that could, not necessarily a revenue source, meaning we're getting monies from the perspective of people being stopped, but it is a public safety matter, and so making sure that they're legal and that if that's an avenue we want to go down, it's not going to be, you know, costly to the city to implement something like that. So I could see us trying to wrap that into a specific ask regarding funding at large for, you know, design work that may also include state highways. So it's not so much SHA do better, it's more, you know what, we're doing it anyway, just pay us for our pain, right? So I think that that may be a way that we can kind of slice and dice it. So I think we can include, that's a long way of saying, I think we can include it, it's just trying to figure out the right way, the right way to include it as part of three.
I think it would be good to include it. That's just my opinion.
Councilmember DeBala, did you have another one?
Yes, so I was asked about climate and environmental legislation coming up this year, and I talked to some people and looked at the Maryland League of Conservation Voters and what they have, because they're the only ones that have any sense of an agenda yet. And I talked briefly to Delegate Charcutian, and everybody seems to agree on the climate side that the, that bringing back the bill that, to reform the empower program, which is the state required utility program for industry, commercial, institutional, residential, which was written in 2008, is kind of out of date. And the bill, there was a bill that passed the House last year, and they just ran out of time. So bringing that back and getting it through both houses and signed by the governor is apparently going to be a priority. And it would update it by linking it to the state's greenhouse gas goals and making that a measure of utility programs and not just estimates of energy saved. So that's all great. What I don't see clearly is how it fits the city's screens for what we comment on. So I don't know if this list. We started particularly in climate legislation that, before as a city, but would MML go there? I'm not sure that we should. My personal opinion, I'm putting it out as an effort discussion, but my personal opinion is we have other priorities as well. That may be more pressing to persuade MML to get on board with. I also looked at other environmental issues, and again, I didn't, didn't hear of anything brewing that the city directly would support. It's early, it's very early, but nothing that came to anybody's mind that I talked to. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember.
And one more thing, thank you to the mayor, let's just all acknowledge that she wrote the draft of this, and I really appreciate it, because otherwise we'd be sitting here with a list of ideas.
No worries. And thank you for checking into, on the environment front. I was like, I'm not said anything really clearly that we should highlight, and so thank you so much for confirming. So I think that, yes. Councilmember Gibson?
I guess I'll follow up on both, on two fronts. One, the environment, and then also, it could very well be seen in public safety, and it's more a question, because I'm not familiar with legislation going on, I'm still, still learning what works here in Tacoma Park. But one of the issues that is important in Tacoma Park, and it did come up at, I believe it was an MML meeting, some of the last, I attended, which was stormwater and this issue across municipalities. So, Ann, I'm just wondering whether you've heard or read anything with regard to that at the state level, ways to assist municipalities deal with, with climate change and its impact on managing stormwater?
So there was a bill last year to try to create a fund to do that. What I don't know, it didn't go anywhere. What I don't know is if the Department of Environment is looking at that, you know, one of the things that happened during the legislative session, because the governor was, you know, inaugurated right after the start of session, and then state agency secretaries were named, you know, at that time, and a lot of them wanted time to figure out what their priorities would be within their state agencies. So I've not heard what, where that issue might be, assuming it's in the Department of Environment. So, you know, we can do that follow-up. A lot of the state agencies are still in the midst of sort of doing their needs assessments and data collection and inventories of programs and staffing, so that they are developing their priorities under the new administration. But certainly can reach out and find out if they are considering something like that.
I would appreciate that. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Gibson. And if you find anything in that way, we can, we can offline and see if we can, if they are. Okay. If I see any more lights, I think, but, but, for, the world to, my, my, but, appreciate your, 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 discussion of proposed procurements, the ERR, proposed items. And so, to kick us off on the topics, I'm going to turn things over to our acting deputy city manager, Mr. Eubanks.
Thank you, Mayor. One moment, please. So, thank you for the, the opportunity to bring these couple of items before council. Regarding the, the ERR-funded projects, the 15-person van, two trash trucks, and then the two electrical fleet vehicles. Before we get started, I want to make an important distinction. Two of these procurement items for FY24, and, and one is for FY23. And, and, to, I think, be mindful of that, because, some, we, to, to do, that being the ability to execute contracts in FY24, although the fiscal year hasn't started. As you may have, have read in the memos, there, there's a certain advantage that we have to doing that. There are two primarily, the cost, and so, from the cost perspective, we have the opportunity to enter into, track, or, in, that we, that, that's currently, a, 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 and, and, also at the, three, right, the, and so, the, the, the idea is that by entering into these contracts now, we do the, the city some, some benefit in being able to save some costs. The other aspect of this is that, as you all may well know, over the last several years, purchasing equipment, but particularly vehicles, often results in a long lead time. And because these items are vital to our operations, we, we want to get ahead of that as best we can. And lucky for us, the, the items that we're talking about today, there are pending vehicles and equipment that we can have access to in relatively short amounts of time. If we were to, for whatever reason, miss out on these opportunities, there will be a likely increase in costs, because we're no longer looking at FY23 purchase prices, and then the lead time would also be much longer, because we're not grabbing the first thing that comes off the line. We're kind of in a different tranche of, of, of folks interested in, in purchasing these items. And so, that's laid out, I think, in greater detail in, in the memos for each of these items, but it is an important distinction for, for council to be aware of. And for the items that are FY23, FY24, they're, they've been budgeted for, and of course, are in line with our, policies. So, that's, I think, some context to the, the nitty-gritty detail. The first item on the, the procurement of a 15-person van, city staff are seeking the authorization to purchase the, the van for our recreation department. We're coming before you with this purchase because it exceeds the city's threshold for the city manager's approval of $50,000, and thus requires council approval. We just recently had this conversation as a part of our FY24 budget discussions, and as a part of the reconciliation process, I think council came up with a really good idea to solve some of the challenges that we've been experiencing with being able to fully utilize the, the, the large van. And so, the, this 15-person van is a replacement for the existing large van that has a wheelchair-accessible lift. And so, as a part of that discussion, what was determined by council is that it's best, in, in the best interest of the city, to proceed with the purchase of a small van that does not require a CDL license, but does have the wheelchair lift, to both allow for staff to be able to utilize to a greater extent vehicle. Right now, the challenge in, and, significant challenge in getting a qualified person, meaning a CDL, a person to drive the van as often as we'd like to use the van. And then, I think, the, the, the limitation is essentially a programmatic one. And so, this is a useful compromise to, to getting our ability to both extend programmatic opportunities for, is, is, and so, then, we, this, we've essentially got pricing from two different vendors. One provided pricing at about $126,000, the other was $130,000, $139,000. The budgeted amount for the FY24 rec bus was $120,000, and so that additional $6,000 would come from the ERR. Staff has done a very good job, I think, of, of laying out in the memo itself, the additional opportunities that this purchase provides. And so, we are available to answer any specific questions about the, the expanded use, as well as kind of the, the detail analysis that went into the, the purchase in and of itself. We, as staff, recognize that the, the purchases need to answer two questions. The, the first is the can we, and I think the, the, the can we question is often answered just from our basic policy. And, and our vehicle replacement policy lays out in great detail the, the criteria that we use to make that consideration. I think as we all have discussed, and, and council has made very clear, there's also kind of the practical aspect of the should we at this time. And, you know, there's, there's a, a level of cost-benefit analysis that we, as staff, need to do before we bring these opportunities before council. And so, I, I'd like to reassure council that these are equipment purchases and vehicle purchases that staff believe are, are vital to providing the level of service that is, is the existing precedent, as well as what we understand to have been mandated by, by council. And so, the, the rec bus, I think, accomplishes that, the, the compromise of this rec bus, it being smaller and having the wheelchair lift, accomplishes that goal. And so, I will stop there and make staff available to answer any questions. This evening, we have, as well as, the, any, the, 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 the.
Counselmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the information tonight, Eubanks. Also like to thank Director Clark, the work that, that he did in, in, at budget time, when we spent some time together trying to figure out a compromise, when the budget was requesting, the city manager was requesting a replacement of two vans, and we, Councilmember Hansak, and, and I had the opportunity to talk with Director Clark, and really came up with a compromise that I think put us in a better position, not just physically, but, but also better for programs than what was originally proposed. So, again, I, I would just say that I strongly support moving ahead with this. It's, it's good to hear that there's also some work put in, and identifying ways to even make it, allow us to get this at the, the cheapest price possible by looking at, signing the contract this year for FY24. So, without a doubt, I, I think we should move ahead with this. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselmember Siemens, Councilmember Dabala.
Yes, thank you. So, just a, a few things to confirm, and then one overall question. Good evening, good to see you, Greg. So, in the write-up, it says that, that that average of 1750 miles a year is pre-pandemic. So, so you're going to use it at least that, and I gather the economics of this was based on the previous use, not any, because you have said earlier that there'd be expanded use, once you get a bus, you'll be able to do more with it. Okay, great. And can we confirm that the wheelchair lift is included in this price? Yes, Daryl's shaking her head. And you've made clear the advantage of pre-ordering now, so the, the advantage, just to restate, as I understand it, is that this price includes a bus that's sitting somewhere that we would get in September.
That's right.
As opposed to waiting for someone to put the body on the chassis, and maybe it gets shipped from China or wherever. Yeah, okay, great, that's, that's pretty key, because you've been waiting a long time on this one. And so, where it, where I have a cup, a question and would like a little more explanation has to do with the alternative of an EV bus, recognizing the advantages of doing it this way, that we just went through. But, city policy, whenever possible, to buy one, also rebates on the table now from IRS for different-sized vehicles. So, it says here that you had, you didn't price because of availability issues, so we'll tell on that.
Sure, and thank you for the question, Councilmember Dabala. There is a lot of fluctuation in the vehicle industry these days, particularly alternative fueled vehicles, and that's very well reflected in our area. So, things change drastically, month to month. For those of you who were paying attention a couple of years ago, we did have the option of both an EV and a hybrid that are now off the table. So, total changes in manufacturing, model development since then, and the price back then was about $70,000. So, it didn't take more than a couple of years for us to get up into the above $100,000 for this type of vehicle, and currently, I don't see any changes to that. I think the price is going to continue to accelerate. We've also, and perhaps we were lucky, we've, the hybrid bus that we were recommending two years ago, that manufacturer is no longer in business. So, had we purchased that, maybe we would have had difficulty with supply and maintenance and repairs. One of the challenges in looking nationally at what's available and, and figuring out what, what works for the city of Tacoma Park is, we're very keenly aware that the distributor, the maintenance responsibility of that vehicle needs to be local. If this is a, a bus that's made in New York, and the manufacturing plant is there, and the maintenance staff are there, we have to fly them down anytime there's an issue. And talking with my colleagues across local municipalities, that's very much the situation we're in right now, for those who have sort of ventured ahead with some alternative fuel technology without local support. So, we feel very strongly that we need to have a relationship with a distributor and a maintenance team that is within the DMV, you know, not, not right next door, but close nearby, so we don't have to fly somebody in for maintenance requirements. So, these two companies that we reached out to for pricing are ones that we've been working with for years and years. They've been providing us pricing for a long time, and will probably not believe it until they see it, that we actually signed a contract, because we've been talking to them for, for, for some time. So, that's basically in answer to your question, Councilmember Dabala. Six months from now, the situation could be different. It, it is very much, much in flux, but some of the things that we look at, in addition to just what's available on a website, is what we can get maintained and distributed and manufactured and, and, you know, serviced within our, our area, so that should anything go wrong with the vehicle, we're, we're not waiting for months for it to be repaired.
So, so what did, so what did you find on electric bus, electric vehicle buses?
No pricing, no one will give us any pricing at this point, because things are in a state of flux. So, we were not able to find any local distributor that would give a price on EVs. They said, check back in a few months. I, I think there's a lot of, lot going on beyond our ability to understand, and so we were not able to find any pricing, not for lack of trying.
So, you did check with local distributors, and they, they came up empty for you?
Yep.
Just checking.
Yeah, both these, these vendors that we've been working with for years were not able to quote us an EV model, and there, there was an alternative hybrid model that's no longer in, in production.
Right, I got that about the hybrid. Did you call other vendors that sell electric buses?
Yeah, that, you know, the, the universe of vehicle distributors is, is pretty tight, so they know what's available and what's available here.
Okay. And I'm assuming that, that if I were to say, what if we waited six months, the answer would be that you wouldn't be able to expand programs?
Well, we'd have the current, current situation, which is a, a non-working lift on our, on our bus and a CDL-required driver. I'm sure the rec department, through Director Clark, would do everything they can do to provide the bus, we also have the smaller bus.
The situation they have now, which is basically key, use, yeah.
Yeah. So, we did look into the repair of the lift, and I think I provided some information to others before.
I remember that, not a, not an option.
The manufacturer of the lift does not recommend repair after 10 years. It has a built-in obsolescence of 10 years, so they would not sell us the repair parts and strongly recommended replacement if we were to work on the, you know, to, to replace the lift. Anyone that we have conversation with says, why are you putting a new lift on an old vehicle? You should replace the vehicle. So, I, again, when you're looking at equipment for a municipality, it, it's not the same as a personal vehicle. You can take different risks and work out things with a personal vehicle that you wouldn't do on a municipal scale. You know, we have the responsibility of providing programming and safe transportation for anybody involved in our programs. So, we want to make sure that our equipment is safe, that it's working well, that it's dependable, that our drivers and staff can get in knowing full well they're going to get there and back, they're not going to have to deal with any drama of a roadside breakdown. And maintaining equipment past its expected useful life is not, it's not a way to, to build a program. And again, what I do in my personal vehicle choices, I drive until they die. It's not the decision that we recommend for municipal fleets where we have much larger responsibility, and want to maintain good quality equipment, both for staff and for program participants, and, and we try to, try to work that balance.
So, two things, just for general reference for everybody. So, the IRS just today issued the detailed guidance on how municipalities can get the direct pay for the income tax credits that the IRS has for everybody else, and that includes electric vehicles. It does also include trash trucks and buses and so forth. So, the, I forgot to ask one more question, the weight on this bus is, the weight?
Currently, it's, it's. It's in, in, there are two buses that.
But they're both over the threshold for the.
Schweckie, or Colonial has in production, they are expecting them to be delivered in September. So, if we.
Oh, I meant a different kind of weight, I meant the heaviness of the bus.
Oh, the weight.
Okay, so I'll just say that the credit is based on the weight of the vehicle. So, passenger cars, such perhaps as the vehicles we're going to discuss in a minute, might, could qualify for 7,500 each, and larger vehicles, such as trash trucks, 30% up to $40,000. So, that's not something to just discard, which is why I'm asking so many questions.
Sure, sure, fully understand, and I appreciate you sending me those links. As you also mentioned, they have to be manufactured in the United States, so that's something that we have to.
The final assembly has to be in the US, and there's a list on the, thank you, Republicans. There's a list. There's a list on the website of which companies and which models for which vehicles. It's kind of tedious, but it's there. And so I had been asking if it was possible to check models, but I hear you don't have models that are locally available. So I would say I would appreciate it if you and I could have a brief conversation tomorrow. Maybe there is some way to double-check with a couple other local distributors for due diligence purposes so that we know that there's nothing available right now of an EV in this, of this sort of vehicle available now in this area. That would just sit better with me because I hate to see forty thousand dollars go by, if it's possible, understanding all the other advantages of moving ahead now. I just would like to get a little more detail on that piece. Thank you.
Councilmember DeBala, do you have any other question?
Nope, I'm done, sorry.
Councilmember Gibson?
Yes, thank you. Kind of in the realm of risks and if we, if a vehicle wasn't available, it's mentioned in the memo that you've contacted the public school system that does have contacts with, quote, "expensive private bus companies." So do you have Director Braithwaite information that, about what it would cost?
I can ask that.
Sure.
Gibson. We, the Recreation Department, for instance, last summer had to contract out buses for our summer camp. And those buses averaged about four hundred and fifty per trip.
Four fifty, you say?
Yeah, four hundred and fifty dollars, averaged about four hundred and fifty per trip. And those were for non-wheelchair lift accessible vehicles. The wheelchair accessible vehicles were about six hundred and fifty per trip. So if we were to not move forward with this purchase, I would say on average, I would estimate about twenty-seven, twenty-eight thousand dollars based on the number of trips that we're planning on taking.
Because at least one or more of those current vehicles are not, well, we know we don't have one with a lift, so we would have, are both of these vehicles unavailable now for use?
No, one of our vehicles are available, but it's only, it's a, I want to say a thirteen passenger, which fits twelve participants. And the larger bus, the bus that we're talking about replacing currently is a twenty, twenty-four passenger with twenty-three without the driver. So the capacity, you're losing the capacity, so we would, wouldn't be able to, we would have to rent anyway.
Yeah, well, I just wanted that as a part of the calculation. I appreciate, I, I'm very impressed with the level of detail here and due diligence and going back to City Manager Eubanks, talking about those two questions, can we and should we now? And I just want to say that I really appreciate that. Yeah, it's also appreciate, or I want to acknowledge that the council is looking into these policies that we have for vehicle replacement. And I will feel more comfortable when we've done that, but in the meantime, I'm pretty impressed with the due diligence you had to make comparisons. I appreciate Councilmember DeBala's check, one less check to make sure that we, that there aren't another, an EV option. And then lastly, it's more to Director Braithwaite's point about costs. Since the previous budget was a hundred and twenty thousand for a large bus, these smaller buses are coming in higher, if I understand correctly. So I'm just noticing that difference there.
I think we adjusted the ERR amount based on the change in purchase structure or purchase type. So I think originally, the large bus had a higher value. Since we were purchasing a lower bus, we were able to reduce the amount.
Oh, okay, so this one-
Yes, because we've got quotes, as you may recall, for both the large and small bus prior to the budget deliberation, so it would have been a higher cost for the larger bus.
Right, fair enough. I just wanted to compare apples to apples, apparently not in this case. Thank you. Again, I really appreciate the diligence. I appreciate that the council is going to look into the policies and the, do we need it now? Can we delay it? Those kinds of questions, I think, are legitimate on these very, you know, expensive vehicles. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gibson. Councilmember Fulter?
I don't want to take up too much time, like obnoxiously in favor of this. The inclusivity of being able to provide access to people that are in wheelchairs, including people without cars, to be able to go on trips is really important. And the environmental impact, because a lot of time when you're planning trips, like you might plan with the youth, you might even need not only a driver, but also a navigator if you're going to take cars in order to do trips like this, in order to manage the people. And so it's just a lot more energy efficient to have the bigger vehicle where you can put more people into it. And, you know, teenagehood is short, and I'm all about getting those teens to be able to have access to the trips that the rec department wants them to go on. And I know that Greg's not going to be able to start planning those trips until he has that vehicle in hand. It's not enough that he's going to have ordered it. He's not going to be able to plan trips for September. He's going to be waiting until October till he can start doing that. And so just, you know, thinking about quality of life that we're providing for our older residents and our younger residents, and at thirty-eight trips annually, just thinking about the logistics of renting vehicles rather than having the ease of access, it's just going to be a lot better programming in the city for us to have the vehicle in hand. So I'm very much in favor of going ahead and purchasing this vehicle.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Fulter. Councilmember Hansak?
All right, everyone, everyone's going to be frustrated with me and staff, but I just want to, I just want to echo my gratitude to Director Clark for, also for working with us during budget season on really helping me to understand better how you think through the processes and how you have historically used the vans and whatnot. I guess where I'm getting stuck is right now, our city has a policy to mitigate our carbon emissions by 2035, and that is our current standing policy. And these buses and trash trucks and everything that we purchase at this moment in time will last, I think, I'm not sure whether it was identified on this one, but I know that in the case, I think of the trash trucks, they last for thirteen years. So that takes us to 2036. And, you know, we can revisit that policy, but that is our standing policy. And I'm equally, if not more, much more concerned in the immediate about making sure we're meeting the needs of our residents and particularly those who are wheelchair-bound, who might, some of them be trying to enjoy the last, you know, ten years of their lives perhaps, and we don't want anyone to miss an opportunity. So what I guess I've been mulling is I appreciate the rental question that Councilmember Gibson asked, but also, you know, could you speak to the logistics of rental? Because when I do the math, I am looking, and looking at the fluctuating market that we're talking about, twenty trips for seniors in a year comes out to about thirteen thousand dollars at six hundred and fifty dollars a trip. I'm aware that you are currently renting school buses throughout the summer months, so no one is not getting a trip, to my knowledge, except I don't know what you're doing about wheelchair-bound residents and whether that is in fact an inhibitor to your activities. But I, at thirteen thousand dollars, looking at the federal rebates, if those were within reach for our city, up to forty thousand dollars each might be worth waiting if rentals were not that unachievable. So can you talk to us a little bit about, I'm sure you've thought about this, so, but you maybe didn't know about the federal rebates either. My main concern here is, could we meet the needs of our wheelchair-bound population if we were to take a small gamble and wait another six months to see if, and maybe have a contract for rentals throughout the whole year for a wheelchair-accessible vehicle, let's say, for the whole year? And I don't even know if they do contracts like that. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I guess that definitely is a possibility, but the department, you know, I just gave the thirty-eight trips was the number that we took pre-pandemic, and we're planning on doing more. We've actually added a couple of senior camps, weeks of senior camp, which we didn't previously have, which will be, most of those are based around the theme and they take a lot of trips. There are trips that we used to go on and we, for some reason, didn't go on anymore. Our team program is historically gone to Guppy Gulch. They've gone skiing, I want to say, a few times during the winter, which will be resuming. We've also taken the kids to different amusement parks as far as where is Kings Dominion, which was another one that we travel to yearly. In addition to that, we no longer, you know, take them down to the Wizards Games and things downtown, the museums and stuff like that. So all of those will be resuming and will increase the number of trips that we actually take, you know, for programming. So, and that does, of course, you know, with the administrative uses as well. So we plan on taking more than thirty-eight trips. You know, especially since staff can drive and we no longer have to get a CDL driver, which is, that was a huge reason we, the number of trips that we have taken have dropped tremendously along with the pandemic because we started having issues with CDL driver right before the pandemic. And of course, you know, the county school system, as well as other bus companies, are having challenges finding, even Metro is having challenges finding folks with CDLs. So it, well, we could make it work, it'll just limit us in the number of trips that we can take. Having the two smaller vehicles, we can, you know, staff will be trained in order to drive, any city staff that can, will be able to drive that has defensive driving. You know, we're planning on training staff on the use of the lift and how to use the lift, the chairlift. So anyone that, you know, takes that training can drive the vehicle. So it wouldn't limit us into, you know, where we can go or who we can actually have drive or we have a driver. So those are some of the benefits, but, you know, we could just rely on Montgomery County Public Transportation, which is Montgomery County Public Schools, to try and get a bus with a lift.
I just wanted to also add, by way of some perspective, we do have in the FY25 budget another replacement of the second recreation van. So there will be an opportunity to look at alternative fuel vehicles there. We certainly, that's our go-to, that's where we start. And we don't recommend gasoline or diesel unless we have no other options. So it's definitely our interest. Additionally, should we delay, which, you know, certainly we think council's prerogative to do, we fully anticipate that the delivery time for the next round of vehicles will be a year or more. We've seen with the EV sweeper, it was a year and a half. So if you're getting in on the new order cycle, there's a real delay in manufacturing still. So we would anticipate that, that period of time, should we wait six months, we wouldn't be able to get the bus within a couple of months. It would more likely be a year later, so we would be, you know, that would have that effect. And, you know, if it was worked out and the rec department could rent a bus, it would just be for, you know, a year and a half or two years versus what we're hoping to be able to do now, which is get a bus in the fall.
Councilmember Fulter?
I don't remember when on the equipment replacement reserve, we're supposed to replace the other bus, the smaller one, but it might be that when it's time to replace the other one, it's going to be easier to replace that one with something electric.
FY25.
Yeah, and so, you know, hopefully, we will be at least moving towards that one being electric. And I, you know, my own, I don't know, I mean, I guess when they say that they can go two hundred and twenty-five miles, that they can actually go that far? Like, I would, I would be, I would feel a little itchy about going to Guppy Gulch in a EV, because, like, we've looked into one for our family, and there's been certain trips where we were like, we're not sure if we could go that far.
Yeah, there's also the issue of the weather with EV distance, so that's a summertime distance. If it's cold at all, you're going to significantly reduce the EV distance. Also, if it's very hot and you're running the air conditioner, you significantly reduce the EV. So those are some of the cautions and concerns that the rec department and we share for this at this particular time.
But, you know, going back to saying stuff that, like, staff isn't going to want to hear as much, but like with the garbage trucks, I do see where it's like, well, they just drive around here and they never go anywhere else. And so, you know, yeah.
Thank you so much. I mean, I, I think that, while I appreciate the opportunity for there to be possible rebates in terms of the cost of vehicle or the bus replacement, IRS is not known for doing things quickly. And so if we've just received guidance, I think that that would further delay our ability to not only identify a bus that could meet the needs that we have as a city, but also would be an EV bus that could also make sure that it falls in alignment with the IRS guidance as well as ensure that we're able to have a viable bus to meet the needs of residents in our community. I personally think that our residents have waited long enough for a new bus. I've had conversations with different groups like the Village of Tacoma and other organizations that are in desperate need of trying to identify ways to serve seniors in the community to go on trips. And we have so many youth in our community that are in need of being able to, to go out and to enjoy, especially after the pandemic. I think it's more important than ever for us to solidify a viable bus option now. I think that we have the ability to transition to an EV option when we are looking into the purchase of our second vehicle. And it won't lead us to the challenge of falling victim to not being able to either receive an MCPS bus in time, the costs associated with those buses, as well as having to potentially incur added costs associated with any repairs for our current buses that are, where we don't have a CDL and they're kind of sitting there. So I support moving forward with the purchase of this bus. Definitely want to encourage Director Braithwaite to continue to turn over every rock possible for us to identify an EV option when it comes time to purchase our next vehicle. But I do think it's important to make sure that our rec department has the equipment they need to provide the quality services that our youth need right now in support of this rec bus. Councilmember DeBala?
Yeah, just to clarify, I will share the IRS memo that I got from National Cities with everybody, so everybody's got it. And it gave, it was, I think I might have used the wrong word when I said guidance. So the program opened in January, and this is how the municipalities can use it, because municipalities don't file taxes in the same way as individuals. So I will share that. And as I said, just looking due diligence one last round would be, I mean, if it's not available, it's not available, end of story. But I would just like to have a little more research in that area. Thank you.
All right, so we've talked about the bus. Now, which one are we moving into?
Next on our agenda is the two trash trucks. And I'd like for this conversation to reiterate something that Director Braithwaite said. Again, you know, we do try to approach these things practically, but it is absolutely true that we, the intention of the city is not to run our vehicles to the ground, right? Because we have operations that we have to perform, and the expectation is that we perform those operations on a regular, at a regular frequency in a predictable way. And so one of the things that we do as a part of this kind of practical application to the question of a purchase is to try to identify- Is to try to, to, to identify the point at which. These, these vehicles or equipment become a hindrance to our ability to do our jobs, right? And so a part of that is, is captured, I think, in, in, in the, in the maintenance portion of. Our equipment replacement policy. But it's also captured, I think, in, in the. The analysis of kind of the downtime of, of our vehicles and, and the implications of that. And for trash trucks, I think when you think of municipal services, the ability to pick up trash is, is one of those basic things that you expect cities to be able to do well. And, and so the two trash trucks that we're seeking authorization to purchase are, are trash trucks that have reached their useful life. And I, I think again, with this memo displays pretty well is that. After a, a certain age, you can expect to incur some significant costs for vehicles of this size. That, that are used at the, the rate that our vehicles are used. And so the, the objective here is to prevent. The city from incurring the, these type of costs, but I think perhaps more importantly. Is to ensure that we can perform our, 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 our services. And so kind of the, 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 the useful life and the, the. The predictions that we have as a part of our policy give us a very good indication into when we can expect to. Both begin to see added maintenance costs, but also significant downtime. As a result of the vehicle's age. The other thing that staff has done fairly well as a part of the, the analysis is really look into. And, and getting at, I think, something that. Councilmember Fulter was, was speaking to. Is, is the ability for a vehicle like this, given that it is a, a local vehicle to. To be a, a all-electric model. And so one of the things that we consider in addition to cost is, is the reliability of vehicles. And, and speaking to some of the, our counterparts or public works counterparts. Here locally, one of the things that was highlighted is the fact that all-electric trash trucks are, are, are not. Providing the level of reliability that we would expect. And so there's, there's a. A reliance or reliability question mark. But then there's also kind of the, the hurdle of the cost. And when you consider both of those items. The recommendation from the city staff is to proceed with the, the diesel option. Which is well within the range of what's been budgeted for, for both vehicles. So the, the recommendation is to proceed with the. MAC diesel model, model for both vehicles, which comes in at about three hundred thousand dollars. The budgeted amount for the, the purchase of these two vehicles for FY twenty four is three hundred and fifteen thousand. And so again, I'll, I'll, I'll pause there. I think I'll just remind. Council that this is also FY twenty four purchase. And we're proceeding with the purchase under the, the same kind of basic parameters that we were seeking to proceed with the rec bus. In that there are some cost savings and then lead time. Advantages to executing a contract now.
Councilmember Honsack.
Yes, I, I. I, I have a new question based on what Director Braithwaite just shared with us. One is, I'm just curious if the city, you, you've spoken to at least one other municipality. I believe you said it was Hyattsville. But thinking about the fact that you said local distributors are a critical element here. Could you help all of us understand, including residents? Is there like a user group of local municipalities? That could be, or that you have explored, maybe having as a service group with a distributor, you know, even kind of, we'll all buy vehicles. If you would, you know, give us greater service at a better cost or something, maybe they're a little farther afield, for example. Is that something that we as council could help explore on behalf of the city? Given that we do really want to see the future be EV, but that sounds like it's a pretty big hurdle and a very real one for practicality sake.
Yeah, I'm not aware of any kind of maintenance user group. There are some fairly large. Distributors of vehicles in our area. And you know, they're kind of, most of the municipalities work with the handful of those that exist. There are preferences among municipalities. Our preference has been for a Leach trash truck body. We previously used International cabin chassis. We've now moved, moved to MAC truck. That has been our, that's our fleet. That's our preference. Other cities may have other preferences, Peterbilt. You know, they each have their. It has a lot to do with their staff training and what they're used to working and what the rest of their fleet is. With things like trash trucks, you want to, it's, it's helpful to have the same manufacturer. So that you're stocking the same parts. You understand the equipment. You've got the relationship with the maintenance folks. So jurisdictions tend to, you know, make their choice and then they're kind of, they kind of stick with it. I'm just trying to think of the other question you raised. With the EVs, it really is raising, you know, some new. New challenges to the area. We are all very anxious to get into the EVs. As, as Councilmember Fulter said, EV. Engine options are ideal for trash trucks. The stop-start, that's the last thing you want a diesel truck to do. It's just terrible. On the engine, diesels don't, diesel engines don't like to stop and start. EVs are very happy stopping and starting. So everyone is very anxious to get into the. EV market. Unfortunately, we're still at a bit of a, a learning curve in our area. I have. Heard and talked to people out in Iowa that have had much better experiences of the truck that currently is in use. Hyattsville actually has two. They have a class six, very small little baby trash truck that would be of no use to us whatsoever. And they have a class eight, the regular, theirs is a twenty-five yard trash truck. It has been. Almost since they got it unusable, it's been parked. And there's a, the repair folks are in New York. They have BYD is the manufacturer of that, that model. Which in some of the conversations we've had with, we've, we've looked into all kinds of interesting options, lease models. Working with arrangements with a buyer's group. So they would provide ten year, you know, a ten year price. They do all the maintenance, they do all the servicing, they'd, you know. Spec the vehicle for us at about a hundred grand a year. Well, for a truck that we're going to keep ten to thirteen years, you just can't justify the cost. So we've been very anxious to get into this market. It's also not ideal. We don't typically tend to buy two trucks at one time. This was just a function of what happened. Thirteen years ago where truck purchases were delayed. We had not intended to ever, I mean, it's probably one of the most expensive. Things that the city does other than building construction. So you'd never intend to put two of your most expensive things together in one year. But that's the, the. That's what happens sometimes when decisions are delayed or purchases are delayed. The next trash truck that's up for replacement, I believe is an FY twenty nine. It's our recycling truck. So hopefully by then we will have lots of options available and the industry will be moving further along. It is very frustrating. We, you know, would really like to get into the EV. EV market now. We are starting to prepare our public works yard for charging options. So we're, we have, you know, we have from. The prior arrangement we had with EVI, we have level two chargers that were. Replaced. So we have them and we're putting them up and we will have charging capacity. At Public Works. We're starting to look at it for the. Community center as well for. City vehicles, because we will have to, you know, make that option available.
Actually, you, you already answered part of my other question, which is about the power infrastructure in your public works yard. So do you have? Do you have, I guess, I was thinking about trash trucks and I was thinking about power outages and I thought. You don't ever want to be without a working trash truck. Or set of trash trucks, actually. So do you have already infrastructure for like solar charging or some other backup? For those, for those EV stations, should you ever acquire a vehicle like this?
Yeah, we do not.
Not yet.
Yeah, we, we do have solar panels on the public works facility, which generates about twenty percent of our power. So we partially, you know, have a partial supply of solar power. Of course, that's only in the daytime, not at night. These trucks will be charging overnight. What I have heard jurisdiction's doing is creating battery, battery packs, battery walls for that very, very same reason. So it is. You know, there, there's, there's significant procedural and mechanical changes that you need to make in order to. Make the transition.
Councilmember Gibson.
Yeah. Once again, I, I, it's, it's pretty. Pretty strong evidence that it's, it's needed. I guess we, once again, the, the, the risk that you talk about. If, if, if one of the trucks were to break down, have. Do you cost it out what it would cost to, because you can lease or you can rent, I'm sure you know. There are trash companies that would, that would fill in if we, if we needed to for a period of time. I don't see any. Cost comparison for that.
Yeah, we have not been able to find any leased trash trucks. We could certainly contract for their service where they would come in and pick up household trash. I have not looked at any pricing of that for a while. It's very difficult to get a trash truck, a rental trash truck. You can get a rental dump truck, rental loader, but a trash truck because of the nature of the work. You don't find any, there's not companies that have trash trucks for rent. So it's, it's, it's a real challenge. Typically, what you have to do is. Find a, find a lease if it's available or a used truck that someone's got on their lot that they'll allow you to use and, and you take your risks with that.
Okay, well. I guess, I guess I would expect that as a part of the. Planning process is that there's a, there's a backup plan or something for, for leasing or rental.
The backup plan for us is that we, we have a spare, a spare truck that we, we keep in the event that a, a vehicle goes down.
Yeah, our fleet.
So we have three then.
Our fleet is, our, our fleet is four trash trucks. We have three in use daily. We keep a spare beyond those four so that we have a backup. So of the two trucks that we'll be replacing, we'll keep one as a spare in the event that. Our other trucks go down. So we typically have five trash trucks available for our use. Four, they're in the rotating fleet, one that has been replaced and is, is kind of deadlined just as a. Emergency backup should our, should our trucks go down. But on a daily basis, we're using, Tuesday through Friday, we're using three trucks, two trash and one recycling. Yard waste, we're using all four vehicles on Mondays.
Okay, so that's four and then the dead one, deadlined one is the fifth.
Five.
And so the.
We keep a fleet of five.
Truck is not the backup for the rest of the week?
It, it is, but we can, we can have more than one truck down at once.
Really? How often does that happen? I'm surprised I don't get more calls about.
Well, it doesn't happen because we have five trucks, so we make sure we get collection done. Yeah, you, you don't want to be in a situation where you can't pick up the trash.
This is true.
Yeah, so we err on the side of caution as. Acting City Manager Eubanks mentioned, it, it's a core function of the city. So we, we've. Run that operation for probably as long as the city's been picking up trash. And we, we do a very good job and part of the reason is because we're very careful with our service and careful with our equipment and. We, we take it all very seriously.
Councilmember DeBala.
Thank you. So. So same questions for trash trucks. So the, the need. Pretty, pretty clear that, that these are on their last wheels, so to speak. And I appreciate the interest in. In trash trucks. I appreciate the interest in, in electric vehicle trash trucks. And again, looking to the IRS credits which apply retroactive to, just double check. Retroactive to January first. So anything bought after January first. Defits the rules. So checking to see whether those models that are available, that are super high priced. Are eligible for the credit. Because then if the difference, it still doesn't break even. But it brings it down forty thousand dollars. So that's something to look at. And I would appreciate it if we could do it before we vote.
Sure.
And again, I'll talk to you tomorrow about the details. I know I saw the model list on the IRS website somewhere.
Yeah, the only thing I could find was the VIN. Of course, we won't have the VIN number until we purchase it. So it's a little bit of a catch twenty-two.
Right, you have to buy it, put the VIN number, then they tell you for sure that it was put together in Detroit. Right, rather than Mexico, even if all the parts were made in Mexico.
But we, we should, I, I fully expect to be able to get that answer, at least a pretty, pretty comfortable answer from both those manufacturers.
Okay, and I'll just check my list. And you addressed that the maintenance costs in this memo are additional outside maintenance costs that you're starting to rack up because they're old.
Sure.
That's important to know.
Yeah, this came up in, during budget deliberations about eight or nine thousand dollars this current year so far in the, on the vehicles. They run the risk of engine rebuild needs, transmission rebuild needs. They do have a very complex emissions system that's federally mandated and that will no doubt need to be rebuilt.
So we're, we're getting close to big bucks time.
Yeah, we're, we're getting into the twenty, thirty thousand dollar repairs. Which, you know, if we need to do, we will do, but it's, it's a lot of money to put into a thirteen-year-old piece of equipment.
Yeah, and so you mentioned, one last question, you mentioned Iowa. And other places outside of this area. What, just out of curiosity, what, what trucks are those? Because the BY.
BYD.
BYD is not one of your two choices for diesel, let alone.
Because it doesn't have a local distributor. It would be coming from out of state.
So, so what are the, what are the choices that are? I'm sorry.
Other than MAC and Peterbilt and BYD? Those are the three I'm familiar with.
The three in this area, okay.
Well, BYD is not in this area, but it was shipped in.
Okay, I was just curious. What the type, what the company, the model that was well liked in these other communities outside of here was, did, did anybody?
BYD is loved in Iowa, apparently.
Well, maybe, maybe they got a lemon.
Maybe, maybe we, maybe, maybe.
All right, thank you very much.
Councilmember Fulter.
You know, I can tell that everybody's frustrated and everybody's disappointed because we're not moving in the direction of EVs. And I can tell that Daryl really shares in our frustration and disappointment. And I know that our, our, our residents are also going to share in our frustration and disappointment. And so. I, I really trust the work that you're doing and I just want to say, you know. If there's a possibility of pushing one of these trucks for like one to two more years and like, yeah, it would cost more in maintenance costs and I understand that. But I really appreciate when I was there for the EV street sweeper. The influence that we had on the country, like that other people decided to get the sweepers. And so it was worth the extra money to, to participate in making. Electric vehicle street sweepers a thing in the United States. And so. The opportunity cost of us not being able to get an electric vehicle for a trash truck. You know, it's, it's not nothing. And so, you know. If, if you think that it's possible to delay one or two years, just one of them, even if it would cost a lot in maintenance costs, it might be worth it. And, and, but I also understand the importance of. Trash pickup. I mean, even during the pandemic, man, you guys kept on going and I really appreciate how. Some of the work that you guys do might be the most important work that goes on in the city. So.
Thank you for that comment and we can certainly take a look at that and I could talk to the. Mechanical supervisor or vehicle maintenance supervisor if, if there's a. Of the two, if the one he thought was most likely to last a bit longer. I mean, in this particular case, we do have pricing for EVs. So, you know, should the city decide it wanted to spend the money. We have EV models, locally serviced EV models available in both Peterbilt. And the MAC truck. I couldn't recommend moving forward due to the double, more than double cost, even i- if we were able to get the forty thousand dollar. Tax credit portion. It would not pay for itself over the life of the vehicle, which is typically usually kind of a marker that you're trying to go for.
I also appreciate you saying that you're not hearing good things about these, these EVs in particular and, you know, do we want to. Spend double the amount on lemons that are going to sit in the yard and never actually go anywhere. I think the answer. I think the answer is no.
Yeah, it's a challenge, because, you know, somebody's got to do it, right? And, but it's, it, there are, you know, pluses and minuses to that.
Councilmember Gibson?
Yes, Councilmember Fulter said, you know, frustration here. It's not just that, it's not an EV, it's, these are, this is a lot of money. And so I, I, I wonder about a delay in considering, you know, the possibility, if you could lease for a period of time if something was down. So I think a, a delay of one of the vehicles, the, the one that's, you know, the, that's, that's, that's in better shape should, should be considered, again, just in terms of our fiscal management. And as with our, in our budget process, we had a number of vehicles that we, we asked to be delayed, not because we didn't think that they would ultimately be needed, but because we wanted to save money. And going back to City Manager, Deputy City Manager Eubanks, it's, it's what, what do we need to do now, or should we do now? So I, I, I think it's worth a look.
I'll, I'll just, as a response, all of these items, I think we've, we've done that level of analysis. And the staff recommendation is that we, we proceed. The, the level of risk at this point is just, from our perspective, is, is not worth it. The option to, to lease, I, I, I think Director Braithwaite had, had talked about this, there, there is no option to, to lease a vehicle, and I don't believe that there's an option to, without kind of future notice or some kind of agreement in, in advance to have a, an outside or external company come in, in the event that a vehicle is down, and on the off occasion, kind of come in and service us. That, the, the structure that somebody would have to have in order to allow for that-
Yeah, it might be worth the discussion.
Doesn't, doesn't seem practical. And so the, 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 the reality of the, the circumstances, this is a vital service that we provide, and, and we need to ensure that we, we have the appropriate equipment. And so the staff recommendation is that we proceed with, with both of the, both the purchases.
Yes, I understand, thank you.
Yeah, and I would just say, you know, part of, part of what we're up against here is our equipment replacement policy is a guideline, is what we anticipate and expect. So we, we've known since we purchased the truck thirteen years ago that we were going to replace it in thirteen years. So if we're going to start changing that formula or changing those, those replacement times, we really need to think carefully about that. Because if we're, we start to get, and I'll just be blunt here, if we start to get into the situation where we're not sure we're going to be able to get support for a vehicle we think needs to be replaced, we might start earlier, right? So that, and, and the wreck bus is an example of that. So you kind of, you end up, you know, we, we are, we try to be totally transparent and, and factual. So we've given it a, we've given it our most factual, most detailed evaluation at face value. So if we start having this conversation of delays and extensions that aren't based on the factual basis of the vehicles, it ends up kind of muddying the waters for our replacement policy. So I really look forward to working with the council on the, looking at our, our fleet replacement, because we do need to have a structure that we're all comfortable with and that we're, that's dependable, and that's plan, you know, it's a planning tool, that, that's really a planning document. So we, we would really encourage us to keep in that, in that process.
Um, Councilmember Hanzak?
Yeah, just one more thing, is I, I, I really want to echo what Councilmember Fulter just said and everything that she said. And trash trucks are indeed totally fundamental to the city. I don't think there's anything that our city could, could need more to work every day all the time. But in light of the disappointment that I'm sure all of us are feeling and residents, I guess I would like to know if there's anything that we as council can do to support the city to help you create that longer term, or even, you know, two-year plan, are, you know, are we fully prepared for when our trash trucks and maybe other parts of our fleet are in fact all-electric as we would like them to be? And what can we do to make sure that you are fully prepared? And I'm thinking of garbage trucks, because as I was really wrapping my head around it and being practical, I thought we've had a lot of power outages, we're likely to have more with climate change issues, and is our city prepared enough for that? You said you have a twenty percent capacity. I, I don't, I didn't fully understand the battery wall, I think you called it, and how that works. But, you know, maybe even if, if you have already prepared something like that, I would love to read it about the preparation of your yard, and if there's something we can do, I would love to hear what that might be, and it doesn't have to be today.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We have a very draft fleet transition policy that both interns and our former sustainability manager worked on. It's sitting there waiting to be picked up and brought forward again, yeah. But yeah, it, there's a lot, it's a, it's a, there's a lot of considerations, yeah.
Uh, well, thank you Director Braithwaite and, and Acting Deputy City Manager Eubanks for, for walking through the deliberation. I mean, I truly value the expertise and the thoughtfulness that you all have been applying to, to these decisions. I think one of the things that's really important for all of us at the DIAS to remember is that we're juggling multiple things at the same time, and sometimes you can't always get what you want, but you better make sure you get what you need, right? You know, as we are trying to work towards transitioning towards an electric fleet, the realities are they're more expensive, and there are still some functional reliability issues associated with them, right? And so as a council, I know, Councilmember Hanzak asked, what can the council do? Well, if we are really pushing towards wanting EV options, it may not be sufficient enough for us to just say delay, 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 because it costs too much. We may have to actually say, you know what, we're going to fork over the money. I mean, we had to do that for the EV sweeper, right? And so if, but that goes against one of our more fiscal responsibility kind of ideals, right? So at the end of the day, there's a lot of balancing and juggling that has to happen. And Director Braithwaite mentioned how the, the fiddling around the edges can lead to, to issues. That is one of the reasons why we're having to purchase two trash trucks in a single year, right? Because folks were fiddling on the edges, delay, delay, then delay, and then they start to sync up in terms of their replacement schedule, which means you have more vehicles that may be due for replacement at the same time. So I know that we have our, our subcommittee that's looking at particularly aspects of the ERR policy, but I, I hope that we can keep some of these, this nuance at the forefront of our minds when we are having discussions around what some of the potential policy changes may be. We may need to account for electrification and the added costs that may be associated with that as part of the equipment replacement reserve strategy or policies, because we have to admit that they are more expensive right now and will likely be more expensive for some, some years to come. I would look forward to seeing, Director Braithwaite, your, what you're able to glean from the possibility of that trade-off between delaying potentially one trash truck to see about a real possibility of how the, the cost breakdown of the maintenance costs versus the added cost of the EV minus the potential cost savings that might happen as a result. I think that it's still going to be more money, right?
It'll be more money, but it'll be forty thousand less.
Yeah, it'll be more money, but it'll be forty thousand less, and then we'll still need to ask ourselves, do we want to pay the money? Right? Do we want to pay the money? And so whether it's, do we want to pay the money now, or do we want to pay the money a year from now, you still will likely need to pay the money. And so I think that that's where we, as, as a city, have to weigh our, our, our needs to deliver this vital service. As I assure you, if trash is not picked up, you, you will hear about it. And so how do we want to balance, balance that trade-off? I appreciate all of the contingencies that our Public Works Department has put in place, but there, there's still, it may feel like there's a lot of room for error, but there really isn't a lot of room for error. So if we are operating at, or at least asking for a delay that may increase additional costs associated with maintenance, you increase the risk of falling from five to four, which means you could potentially run into the risk of, of having to make some alterations to your trash delivery schedule. But I definitely look forward to additional feedback from Director Braithwaite on getting a better understanding of what some of the EV options may be prior to our vote next week. The next one is police fleet, fleets, right? Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Hanzak?
No, just quick, quick charge to us council, since we're all going to MML in about a week, or several of us are, maybe we can just talk to some other cities about the possibility of this distribution situation, you know, is there something we can all do as a conglomerate to get more distribution if we were all purchasing in similar years for trash trucks? For example, knowing that that's a really high-value EV, just something we could explore, right? Anyway.
Yeah, I'm not sure, um, yeah, no, I think that's a good idea. I don't know to what extent municipalities, I know there are some aspects of bulk buy that happens in other, other areas, I don't know about equipment replacement, but that'll be something interesting to learn more about.
Okay.
It's a common move on, on energy-related items. So bulk buy solar panels, bulk buy personal EVs, there's a lot of that. So maybe it's transferable, but we could, we can certainly talk it up.
For sure. So next, we're moving on to the two police fleet vehicles.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a FY, or these are FY twenty-three purchases included in the budget as a part of a total of seven vehicles that were slated to be replaced in the Police Department Fleet. Unlike, I think what we've been discussing so far, we actually do have the opportunity to replace two gasoline-powered, powered fleet vehicles with EV options. And, and so the, the question at hand, or decision for council is to authorize the purchase of two vehicles related to two different functions of the police, police department. One is parking enforcement, and the other is for our special assignment team. For the, I'll begin with the parking enforcement vehicle. Right now, we, we currently have two parking enforcement officers and one vehicle. And, and beyond, kind of sticking with the theme of critical operations and equipment, beyond perhaps the handheld devices that parking enforcement use to, to, to scan vehicles and, and to assess them, vehicles that the parking enforcement staff use are, are probably the next, most frequently used piece of, piece of equipment for, for our staff. It enables them to, to move throughout the city, through all of our wards, and, and do exactly what they do, enforce, enforce our parking requirements at every level. And so having, having a single vehicle for two parking enforcement officers is incredibly restrictive right now. The second of the two parking enforcement officers is using a very old, well, not old, but hard-to-use vehicle, a, a, an old admin vehicle, and hard to use because its transmission is, is in need of repair. And the directive that we've received from our lead mechanic is that the cost to replace the transmission exceeds the value of the vehicle. And so the recommendation, although this vehicle was slated to be replaced several years from now, is that given the, the, the cost of the needed repairs, that that vehicle be pushed up to FY twenty-three and, and, and be replaced sooner rather than later. That has been switched with a vehicle that had the opportunity to be replaced now, and that vehicle is, is going to be pushed back to, to a later date. So again, this is, is something that we deem very critical in order for that division to, to, to do what we've enabled them or suggested that they should do. The, the other vehicle to be purchased is the replacement of a Silverado SUV that was purchased in 2016. This is a vehicle that's used by a special assignment team for covert activities, essentially surveillance. I'll add, and, and the police chief can, can give more detail, but this particular division has been responsible for a lot of high-profile arrests in, in, in recent history. And I think there's a significant reliance on their tactics and ability to, to address some of the rising crime that we're seeing, not only here in the city, but through, throughout the, throughout the area, throughout the region, and really throughout the country. And so this, this vehicle is a, a electric replacement of a vehicle that too is, has seen better days and has begun to incur increased maintenance costs. Fortunately for us, the, the advantage of, and costs of EV makes sense here. And so the recommendation from staff is to proceed within budget with the purchase of these, these two vehicles. The total cost is just about ninety-one thousand dollars. We'll be writing on a contract out of, out of Baltimore. The vehicle costs themselves are totaling about seventy-seven thousand dollars, but for the special assignment vehicle, there will be some additional equipment purchases to outfit that with, with the appropriate equipment and enable it to be the covert vehicle that it, that it needs to be. And so again, I'll pause there and make myself and, and the chief available for any questions that, that you all might have.
Councilmember Dibala?
Yes, thank you very much for this thorough treatment. And while I've got the floor, I didn't say thank you to the Director of Public Works for such thorough treatment, and, and don't, don't take my EV harassment for anything more than my just being obsessed with one topic. So, so thank you very much for doing this. Remind me what we budgeted for, for these two vehicles in the fiscal twenty-three? Because I don't actually, it may be in here, and I just don't see it.
We have the total cost for all seven vehicles, which is about four fifty.
Couldn't find it, okay, so this is within the budget, give or take a couple bucks? Okay, not a big over cost, good. And then because you're writing on a contract and it's the end of the model year, we're getting a good deal?
Yeah, we're, we're very fortunate to get the pricing that we're getting from these guys.
Yes, those look like really good prices to me. I will also send to you the potential tax credits, and if they were assembled in Detroit and not in Mexico, we could get seventy-five hundred dollars back eventually from IRS. Every penny counts. And I had a question that you clarified for me in writing, but just so everybody else knew, heard it, the, the shaded vehicle on the table said fiscal twenty-seven, but the, the Acting Deputy City Manager explained that you're swapping it out because its transmission is going with another vehicle, pushing that one back. That makes perfect sense to me. And I appreciate the, the use information as well. So I guess I don't have any other questions, I just had that one budget question, thank you.
Councilmember Hanzak?
Okay. Thank you, I, thank you to, to all of you, including you chief, for really thorough, I, I really appreciate how thorough these were, they answered most questions that I had. I just had a couple of questions that came to mind as I was looking this. One was related to the vehicle and, and how code enforcement is done, because I thought residents might be interested as well, in terms of the bicycle use. Are bi, are the E, the electric vi, electric bicycles utilized very often for doing parking enforcement in particular, and do you find that to be a viable alternative? Since I think, I think, as I read here, one of your code enforcement officers doesn't currently have a vehicle. Is that right?
The, the six bikes that we have are currently used by our patrol force. We, they get a lot of use from the patrol force. We currently do not utilize the bicycles for parking enforcement. That's something we could explore. We don't have bikes specifically assigned to them. In addition to the vehicle, they also have mobile, mobile computers in their vehicle that they're able to run tags with.
Right.
We don't have- We don't have portable units to do that. They're attached to the car. So as they drive around the city and they run tags, they use that unit to run tags, and they also use that to print tickets. So we'd have to get the apparatus, not only to have the bikes to be able to do that, but also the apparatus to have them on that, to have that portable, not necessarily attached to the vehicle.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. I was imagining how that seemed, in theory, like parking moves slower than most of your other police activities, I think, and that it might be a way that it could be used, but that makes sense. Yeah, thank you for clarifying. And then my other question was maybe a very naive one, but when I thought a brand-new shiny e-vehicle doing covert operations, the image, what's that?
It's right in, it's called a covert.
Well, maybe, or I was thinking, I was thinking actually of a vehicle that I thought might be covert, and I'm not going to say where, in my ward. And I kept looking at it thinking, and it was nicely kind of discreet because it wasn't really, it was kind of blending into my environment, which, where there are not very many EVs, because it's lower income. Just, can you just comment on that thought process? Am I off-base? Do you think it might not stand out just a little bit as being just a little too shiny?
I answered your question earlier by email, but I'll answer.
Oh, I haven't seen it yet, I'm sorry.
And for you and for the public.
Thank you.
This will absolutely blend in. I think your email asked, is a lot of our covert activity done in some of our lower-income areas of the city? That's just absolutely not true. The vast majority is done in some of the higher-income areas that have burglaries, carjackings, and other incidents. And this vehicle, more than any other vehicle, as Councilmember DeBala just said, it's right in.
Thank you for that clarification.
It does not look like a police car.
Thanks.
Great. Well, I thank you so much, Chief, and Daryl, because I know that a couple of years ago, that was one of the things that we were really pushing, to try to identify ways in which it would be feasible to switch over some of the enforcement-related vehicles to EV approaches. And I recognize that there were still some challenges in terms of patrol vehicle availability, but you all committed to identifying vehicles that would be appropriate, and it's awesome that we got it on sale. So I'm definitely in support of moving forward with this purchase. And thank you all so much for continuing to follow through.
And for the council, as we move forward, there is, we anticipate, as I've talked about, a pursuit patrol-rated electric vehicle is coming on the market. Chevy is making that vehicle. So we, Chevy. So we anticipate, it's a Chevy Blazer. We anticipate, as we move forward with our patrol fleet, those vehicles will be available. So we'll be briefing you on that. There is some hesitation from our public work folks of moving entirely over to that type of fleet until we understand if those vehicles are viable vehicles. Similar concerns that they have with the trash truck, we just want to make sure that the emergency equipment is viable. So we're really excited about that. You know, my commitment by 2035 is to have an entire electric fleet, hopefully before that. So as I said, we committed to having our civilian fleet all-electric. I think we can do the same for our patrol fleet.
Great, thank you. All right, so the last work session for this evening is, yeah, single reading ordinance authorizing approval of contract for the Tacoma Branch stream restoration.
Thank you again, Mayor. So the opportunity again for council is to authorize the approval of a contract for the Tacoma Branch stream restoration, which is a project that includes the restoration of approximately 200 of the 700 linear feet of Stream Valley and the installation of a stream bed stability features for an area known as Tacoma Branch. It starts at the stormwater outfall located at, or behind 6608 Poplar Avenue, and eventually joins several other small tributaries before meeting Sligo Creek. The city acquired the property in 2003 from the Maryland National Capital Park and Planning Commission, otherwise known as MNC PPC, and assumed the maintenance and management responsibility of the property at that point. The stream, as some of you may know, has experienced severe erosion due to heavy rainfall flows and the conditions of the stream bank. Prior to the city's acquisition, the stream had been long neglected. It was formerly a part of Prince George's County. But since acquiring the property, the city has performed invasive removal, tree removal, as well as some cleanup of dumping around the property, at least to the extent that has been possible to date. The restoration of the project through the Stormwater Management Fund will restore a portion of the blighted area of the city. And I think it's important to note, too, that the city is required by law to comply with the Maryland National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System Permit, which requires the establishment of programs that control discharge of stormwater into systems, drain systems, and the management of pollutants to ultimately improve water quality. And by completing this project, we earn credits toward the MPDES requirement, which again is a mandate from, I believe, the federal government, if I'm not mistaken. This project is something that we've been working on for many years. The design phase started at least five years ago, I believe it is. And we've since designed and received all of the necessary permitting from MNC PPC. And we're now prepared to proceed with the project implementation. And so we've issued an RFP, we received six responses to the RFP, and the Public Works Department is recommending that we move forward with Echotone, which is the low bidder. The low bid came in at just about $197,000. The budgeted amount in FY 23 was $250,000. And then I'll pause there, once again, to open for any questions that you may have, and Director Braithwaite is still with us.
Councilmember Gibson.
Yes, well, I live just up the street from Tacoma Branch and have seen it, and it is direly in need of restoration. I also learned enough to understand that there's lots of different kinds of stream restoration. So I wanted to ask just a little bit more about what would be involved here. I did a little bit of just checking in terms of the Montgomery County's environmental protection and what was required in terms of an MS4 permit, what they monitor. And just maybe for the audience here, that stream restoration is aimed at, you know, protecting adjacent properties, public infrastructure by reducing stream bank erosion, which is pretty clear, minimizing downcutting of the stream bed, and restoring aquatic ecosystems. So I was kind of wondering whether there is, whether that monitoring will be done of the aquatic systems. And often, stream restoration means a lot of rocks, riprap, which thrown in, but there's also native plants are put in. Could you speak to both what the plan is for restoration, and then also what kind of ongoing monitoring might be done for that? And then one last thing, I believe that this is only part of the Tacoma Branch. This is, so I wondered if you'd speak to the balance of Tacoma Branch that goes up to New Hampshire Avenue where it crosses over.
Right, right. Thanks. We could spend about several hours answering that question, but briefly, this particular project is what we consider Phase One. It's the first 200 feet directly from the outfall, 200 feet further, where we have some of the most severe erosion taking place. Any of you that would like to come walk down and see it, I think you'd be shocked. And I'd be happy to join any of you there if you want to take a look. We've been watching this, this stream and working on this project, as has been mentioned, for many, many years. And I visit it at least once a year, and the deterioration from one year to the next is remarkable. We have some severe erosion problems. Interestingly enough, one side of the stream has 18 feet of rubble. State Highway dumped layers of probably New Hampshire Avenue on that stream bank. So the topography has been totally unnatural, man-made. And, you know, for many years, we were exploring what it would take to remove that fill, 18 feet of concrete and asphalt. It's no, no small feat. This project doesn't include that, but it does try to address the first 200 feet through a series of things. I included in the packet a diagram of the work zone area, and it has some of the details of what would be done. Again, there will be weirs, there will be stone structures, there will be reorganizing of the stream bank to provide areas for native plants to be added. I was able to forward the RFP to Councilmember Foulter and would be happy to share that with any who are interested. It goes into great detail about the work plan and the specifications. I will say, this property is actually owned by Park and Planning and is not owned by the city. The city did not acquire it. Those of you who may have been around, in 2001, this was a 23, 23-lot development that was up for development and had townhouse development in plan. And through the efforts of the community, the city was encouraged to try to purchase that property to keep it from being developed. The cost of that was beyond what the city could afford at that time. So we worked with Maryland National Capital Park and Planning Commission. They spent $600,000 or $700,000 at that time in 2001, yeah, $760,000 to purchase that property. And the agreement they had with the city is that over the next four years, our POS allocation of just under, just over $22,000, $23,000, the city would put towards that, paying back that portion to Park and Planning. So the city ultimately contributed about $110,000 towards that purchase. The arrangement that was made, maintained the property in the ownership of MNC PPC, but the maintenance responsibility was the city's. Some of you may remember, there was a house, a dilapidated house on the lot that the Park and Planning was able to demolish. And the lot has pretty much stayed as is, other than some very surface work, tree removal, invasives removal, trash removal that the city's done. We have done both Phase One and Phase Two environmental site assessment. There is, there has been historic dumping on the site, buried beneath the site. So there's limitations about what can be done there. It can't be excavated to any high degree because there's likelihood of uncovering materials that are buried beneath the surface there. So I'm trying to think of how best to answer the question. Perhaps the best thing to do would be to take people down to the site to show the scope of work and the work area, because I think that will provide probably more information than I can do. When you're restoring these types of streams, again, because it's an outfall, the initial process will be to reestablish the outfall itself, because right now the outfall is collapsing. It's a private property backyard behind 6608. So they are losing portions of their backyard as the outfall continues to deteriorate. So the first portion will be rebuilding that outfall, stabilizing the slope, and then creating a plunge pool so that the water coming out of the outfall actually recirculates and drops out some of the sediment and pollutants, and then protects the stream bank through the next 200 feet, through weir structures that slow down the flow of water and try to calm it down as it eventually makes its way to the Anacostia. So this project was developed with a crack team of water quality engineers through both MNC PPC and Rumel Klepper &amp; Call, an engineering firm that we work with. In addition to park permits, which this has to have, we have state permits. So there's rigorous requirements from the state in terms of general work permits, water quality permits. We currently do outfall testing at this location of water quality. We don't do any aquatic life. And because the nature of this stream is actually a stormwater pipe, there is very little aquatic life that would survive in that environment. Maybe further downstream, but because of the nature of the flow of stormwater, if you can imagine, it's a kind of a six-by-four-foot outfall that can be entirely filled during a heavy rainstorm with water coming out at a force that would, you know, erode and destroy anything that it comes in contact with. So there's very little aquatic life within the stream itself. There is other habitat and species outside of the stream, frogs and deer and raccoons and you name it. But the water quality itself is pretty extreme. The, a major portion of the source of runoff comes not only from Tacoma Park, but also from DC. It's within the water systems that flows from DC into Tacoma Park. I hope I answered most of your questions. If there's something there I didn't, I can provide some more details by email.
That was very helpful. Yeah, I was kind of questioning what could live there in the water. But I would, to go back in terms of the, kind of the the stream ecosystem and native plants and what would be, so there will be an effort to restore that for those other, those land-based critters that want to be there. And I've been down there several times, and I think it's only two weeks before Parks and, no, Parks, I guess Parks and Planning is doing a cleanup for the land that goes up to Sligo Mill there.
Oh, great.
So that, anyhow, but I would welcome going down with you, and maybe others, to see and learn. You know, we went on the LIDC tours and learned a lot, and I learned a lot on this. And to have, to see it before and then afterwards would be great. And then lastly, what about that Phase Two? When or who would be doing that, the second or third phase?
Well, the assumption is it would be the city, and that it would be, if not all at once, because it's a significant length of stream, though much less, and much less disrepair than the first 200 feet. So there's also opportunities, as I mentioned, for some real extreme restoration there. If we were to try to return the floodplain to its original state and remove all the fill that's between Poplar Avenue and the stream itself. So there's opportunities there. For many years, we tried to get grant funding through DNR, through National Fish and Wildlife Federation, through Maryland Water Quality Grants, just could not, for the life of us. We were successful with many other grants, but not this one. So there could be the opportunity for grant funding again. We tried to, at one point, we were thinking about doing a trash capture, which isn't the most attractive thing, but there's a lot of floatable debris that comes out of that outfall that then makes its way to. So basically, if you can imagine a floating basket that just catches all the trash and then you empty it on a regular basis, likely not something that the property owner would like to look at, but would be, from an environmental point of view, potentially very helpful. What we ended up with is the stream restoration project. I would be happy to try to coordinate with our engineering team and see if we could pick a date where they can join us, because they will be able to provide vast amounts of information about the design and the scope of work. One of the things that is, we are aware of with this project is because it is, you know, the state of Maryland waterways, you're not allowed to work during certain seasons. So March through the middle of June, you're not allowed to do any work in a stream of this type because of potential impact to aquatic life. So we're required to start after June. The draft RFP was developed, so the project would be, I think, completed by September. So we are hoping to get started very soon. A new wrinkle was introduced in that there's now a new... A new wrinkle was introduced in that there's now a new protected species that we have to determine whether or not that there's an impact there. There's a black-eared owl, so we may have to do an evaluation of whether there's black-eared owl habitat within that woods, and if so, then we would have to delay till after October. So our design team is currently working on that. It's a very new requirement that just came up through the state in the last month or so. So we anticipate getting started soon, and certainly our partner, Echotone, would like to get started soon, but we're just waiting for confirmation on the owl, or the bat, I'm sorry.
Is it a bat or an owl?
It's a bat, sorry.
Well, I hope it's there. I mean, I hate to see it delayed, but again, thank you, and I look forward to going on the tour.
Yep.
Councilmember DeBala?
Yeah, a couple of follow-up questions, just for my personal curiosity. Have black-eared bats been seen in this area, in this immediate area?
I don't have any knowledge of it myself.
Just curious. Following up on a couple of Councilmember Gibson's questions, I'm really glad we're finally getting to this. Does this stand alone if we only do Phase One?
Yeah, yeah. It certainly serves a very critical function, not only because of the loss of property that's currently being experienced in the failing outfall, but also for those first 200 feet of the stream. It's very much going to slow down and protect the rest of the stream bank by the work that we're going to do in the first 200 feet.
Is it a significant or a minimal contribution to MPDS? My vague recognition is it's pretty significant.
Yeah, stream restoration gets you some good credits, so we hope to gain at least two acres, if not more, of credit. Our total credit that we have to achieve is 109. We're not there yet by 2025, but this will give us a couple of acres. For a city of our type, you know, we're usually getting .05 from a bio-retention facility or, you know, small, tiny amounts, so two acres of treatment is significant. You know, in comparison, the last stream restoration we did with Circle Woods, we got eight acres of treatment in Circle Woods, and that very much is a habitat, you know, totally different environment, even though its source is an outfall, it really is because of the nature of the stream itself and that the flood valley was not impacted like the Tacoma Branch is in this location with the, you know, disposal of other materials.
And this is the upstream bit, so there's no impact from the, it's not, it's not the section down by New Hampshire Avenue? So there's no impact for the, for the, there's no connection with the bikeway?
Right, right. It's just the first 200 feet. I think it's 700 feet to get to New Hampshire Avenue, so it's the first 200. And if we all go on the tour, the coolest part is the graffiti under New Hampshire Avenue, so we'll have to proceed all the way down to there, because there's some graffiti that should be in museums, it's beautiful.
Fine. So, last question. There's a big variation in bids. What's the variation, and how much do you know about Echotone, the bid you've selected?
Thank you.
I mean, that is a huge variation, right?
Yep, yep. Thanks for asking that question. There was a total of eight vendors that we sent the RFP to. Normally, the city would just generally advertise, but again, because this is MNC PPC's property, we had to follow very closely their requirements and work very closely with them. They had a list of eight companies that they work with that are certified to do stream restoration, certified to work in...
Oh, so this is their list, got it.
Yep, so this, we got bids from six of the eight that were included in their list. Again, our estimate was in the $200,000 range, so we were very pleased. I think you see those first, the lowest three bids. To me, that's a very tight cluster, so that says that, you know, we've got a good price. The folks at Echotone obviously sharpen their pencils, and we've also compared, this is a unit price bid, so we had volumes and quantities, and so they gave pricing based on our engineering's estimate of quantities, so we're pretty comfortable that all the costs have been identified, there could be unknowns, but we were able to compare each bidder's response to each item and make sure that everything was, you know, kind of reasonable, that they weren't missing anything or extremely overpriced or underpriced for any items. So we've sat down with them and went through a very detailed analysis of their bid, and they're quite comfortable with their numbers, and, you know, our engineering team is very comfortable with their competence to do the job.
Wonderful. And remind me to send you something I got from the Chesapeake Bay Trust, which now funds some local government projects, and I got a notice from them the other day. I didn't even think about this, but it might, it might fail, we can read it.
Yeah, yeah.
Councilmember Siemens?
Thank you. I was, I think you've probably answered the questions that I had, but, you know, this stream only passes for a short distance through the city. It sources in the District of Columbia and it passes under New Hampshire Avenue and out of the city. I was just curious, and I think you've probably answered this, as far as the real effect we're having on the quality of water going on down into the Anacostia?
I would say it's significant, again, particularly in light of the amount of erosion that's taking place on a literally daily basis there. So the amount of sediment and erosion that's taking place is remarkable. So if we can restore the site and stop that from happening, we've done a great service to the water quality. Obviously, it's only, you know, one piece of a very large need, but it is significant, and it will help to shore up and stabilize that area, which is, you know, deteriorating at a rapid rate.
Thank you. The diagram that you gave shows the envisioned townhouses. I assume that those are no longer envisioned?
Right, that was just to give the sense of in 2001, what was being proposed there. That was, those are the 23 lots that were proposed. And when you look at county records, it's still, it's still shown oftentimes. The subdivision was already plotted and recorded, and so by the Park and Planning purchasing this property, it stopped the development.
Right, and also the street doesn't go all the way down to a circle?
Oh, yeah, well, that's the, that was the proposed roadway.
Right, all right, thank you.
Councilmember Gibson?
Just one last question. I'm curious about the two acres of credit, is that based on the volume of water?
The credit is based on the pollution, pollution removal. So it's the equivalent of, my brain has stopped working, it's, IAE, the impervious, anyway, I can get you the detail, but it's actually a calculation that's done by formulas that the state provides, so it's based on the pollution reduction that would be equal to, yeah, natural state, you know, so it's the equivalent of restoring two acres of natural land, so...
So they don't, they don't measure the pollution to figure that out?
No, no, it's all formula-driven.
And the formula must be based on how much water and, anyhow...
Well, they have calculations specific to stream restoration, which is, it's usually linear fit, feet-driven, but, yeah, if you want to dig into that, I can, I can provide that part of the Maryland manual that shows you how they do the calculations.
I think it's based on studies that have been done, other places where they have done the water quality testing, and then they extrapolate from that base of testing to...
Extrapolate somebody else, yeah. Thank you.
Great. Well, seeing no more lights, I just want to thank Director Braithwaite for continuing to push forward and educate us on all of the wonderful things that are happening in our Department of Public Works. I look forward, I feel like we were, we'd start talking about the Tacoma Branch stream restoration, even when we were talking about the ARPA monies and trying to figure out what to do with that, so it is good to see that we have contract bids in place and we're actually able to make some progress. So just want to remind my colleagues, we will be voting on these procurements next week, on Wednesday, so want to encourage, and again, thank you to Deputy Director Braithwaite about following up on a number of different questions that people have, so that we can make sure that folks are able to ask the necessary questions as we prepare to vote on these procurements next week. And with that, I would like to call this, adjourn this meeting, so, excellent. So everyone have a great night.
Thank you.